Let's call this meeting to order at six o'clock. If you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I can't.
(inaudible)
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We get the roll call, please.
Ma'am?
Councilmember Elmas.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Ingalls.
Yes, here.
Mayor Shippers.
Here, thank you.
Why is that forget?
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open up, get ready to open up public comments. Please remember to state your name, sign on the sheet there. You have three minutes to speak, and let's maintain decorum in the gallery, so please, no cheering, jeering.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Make a motion to approve the agenda?
No, that's after.
Nope.
Not on my end.
I lied.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support it.
There we go. Get her on right.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Elmas?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, of course. Sorry. Okay, now, we're gonna do public comments in the correct order. So, three minutes, please be kind to the speaker, and... Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Barnett, 915 Stimson. Since our last meeting, the airport came back, which is, I think owned by the county, run by the city and/or a joint group. It's fuzzy, but the levels came back at 130 parts per trillion, which is sky-high. I would ask that you work together with the county and get some funding that's available for airports, for monitoring wells, groundwater flow. It's really the time to work together would be right now, funding, grants, loans, whatever is available. So I would please ask you to do that. Other news on the PFAS is that wells around 44 Road and a triangle have each shown detections for PFAS, and similar to Herring who has a municipal well that's deeper, theirs was infected by the same kind of thing. So just ask that you test more out there on 44, keep an eye on that, and hopefully we're deep enough to not have to worry about that. But it was startling to see a triangle around that source. I'd like to hear what you're hearing from your testing that you've been doing, and what sources may be coming forward. The numbers I didn't mention last time across the street, from Platte I did, but also 13th Street, and it's going down as you move away from the wastewater treatment plant. Finally, the meetings, I would ask again, thank you for looking into it, I did bring it up before, but people, seniors, my family member sits in front of her TV waiting to watch our meetings every week, every other week. I would like to see replays. We need to get these back on TV, and it's a significant portion of our city. It's our seniors, it's people who vote if that makes a difference, they are engaged in our community. I would ask that you get those meetings back on TV ASAP, that you have replays played of all the missed meetings. People enjoy flipping channels and coming to a city meeting, and they get educated because of that. It's so easy. It's been going on for 40 years. It's one of the reasons I was involved in city government was because meetings were on TV. So I would ask that you make it easy for seniors. We be on guard about these tests that are coming in, that they need investigation and support, teamwork, and hopefully we can all work together to find solutions, and also limit the human health exposure that's gone on in this county, in the city. But it's in your airport that's out there, I think is jointly owned by the county, if not, it certainly has been operated and funded and appointed that way. Those are my concerns. I did file an appeal, I didn't hear back, just, I'm not concerned about that tonight. I'd like to resolve that with just some paperwork, but with that said, that's all I have, and thank you for letting me take up my three minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening. Matt King, 604 Holly Road. I'm here tonight because after reading the reviews about our manager, it's become evident there's a disconnect between the council and the community. I won't touch the PFAS issue, as more qualified people have spoken on it in the past, and they will again. Instead, I will touch on the little things, things that signal to young professionals that Cadillac is not growing nor well-managed community. So let's just a few. There's gravel in the bike path, brand-new pickleball nets were left up all winter, public dog bag waste dispensers were unfilled, power boxes are unlocked, there are lights along the lake path that have been out for a while, and there are Christmas lights still hanging up in April. At the end of the day, these inadequacies and lack of attention to detail add up, and they all do lead back to Marcus. While I understand that there are department heads that take care of this, they all report to the manager. To be completely clear, Marcus is in charge, and the buck stops with him. I understand Ward Two is getting a new playground, and I think that's wonderful. I do fear under Marcus's management, it will go unmaintained. For a long time, we've been asking Marcus to step up, but that has not happened. It is no longer an ask to step up, it is now a demand to step down. These issues should not be a surprise to any of you, they have been raised to council time and time again. Unfortunately, in response, all you've done is try to sell lies that no one but you is buying. It's like there's a house fire, and while the community is screaming for help, members of council are adding kindling to the flames. When Mayor Philkins chose to step down, and we decided to shuffle council, there was a lot of talk about putting people in place who wanted to serve the community and put Cadillac first. However, all I've seen is a group who cares more about Marcus's feelings than they do about the community's well-being. I'm sure Marcus is a fine person, but he's not a quality manager. Council isn't helping the community or Marcus by lying about his performance. Please, do your jobs, put the citizens first. Thank you.
So, I'm speaking tonight not just as a resident, but a grandparent, because I found out today, I'll wait for the conversation to be done. So I found out today that my granddaughter's daycare tested positive for seven of the eight categories of PFAS. In fact, exceeded the state level for PFAS, and she's been at that daycare now for, she's gonna be four. So I've got a four-year-old granddaughter who's drinking PFAS because of individual Marcus chose not to tell anybody about PFAS seven years ago when you knew about it. You chose to keep it quiet. There's email, because we had a FOIA where Jeff Dietland says to you, "Oh man, Bill Barnett brought PFAS back up on the radar." If there's transparency, then why was it off the radar? Imagine what we could have done with that time, those seven years, my granddaughter wouldn't be drinking PFAS-contaminated water. Now it's personal, Marcus. It's personal. There's two things you don't do in life. One of them is you don't mess with a man's family, and you've crossed that line.
Are you threatening me?
You've crossed that line. Are you talking back to me? Is he gonna interrupt? Where is the decorum, Madam Mayor? I'd like to have that time back if I could, please, and I expect more out of the council. Thank you. You can take it any way you want, Marcus, but you lied. You kept it quiet, you purposely kept it quiet. You held an LDFA meeting in private. You didn't publish the minutes, you didn't publish a notice for that meeting, you made a business decision in the LDFA to squish PFAS, and you didn't even have a quorum. Hmm, imagine. And the city council refuses to take a look at that. Straight violations of the law, and you refuse to look at it, so now kids in this community for the past four, five, six, seven years are drinking PFAS water because of you, because of your unwillingness to make it public. You and whoever else, you decided to hold these meetings illegally, held these meetings in private, so the citizens didn't have any input. So you take whatever I say any way you want to, Marcus, because I really don't give a damn. But I can tell you this, this is long from being over. I will not go away until you're gone. Rest assured. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather, 1101 Walnut Street, and also a business owner right downtown at Wildflower 105 South Mitchell. This is my first time here, so I hope I'm at the right spot of this. Heart is racing. I am here on behalf of Pine Street, 128 East Pine. I need to get back to my kitchen, I got pastries in the oven. I'm also a DDA board member, and Sarah and Ethan came in front of us and told us their plan and what their intentions were with 128 East Pine. And the DDA board unanimously supported them being downtown. I also support personally, because I have had the opportunity many times to deliver food to people that have stayed at that house, and what they bring to downtown, and seeing them shop and support our downtown is spectacular. It's right on the cusp, and I don't know all the ins and outs and all the rules of zoning and everything else, but from a standpoint of having the pleasure of meeting them, and being in the house, and also seeing the jobs that that house provides by the people that clean and take care of that, is unmeasurable, really. I know that there are people that are naysayers about short-term rentals, and I understand that in certain areas, but this house is unique, and it stands out from any residential area, and I think it should be isolated from that. And I know maybe in the past, they made a mistake, or they've forgotten to do something, but I believe if I'm correct in this, they have made all those corrections, and the city is not out any financial burden from those things in the past of them trying to get to the point of having that rezoned to be able to be a short-term property. Is that accurate? The DDA, you know, we look at, we're forward-thinking. Our feet point forward, our eyes point forward, and everything that we're trying to do is really build our town. And the people that bring that to us are the outside people that come to us to visit in the summertime, and that tourism, disposable income, all of that has such a valuable role in for Cadillac, in the city of Cadillac, to be successful. We've been here 21 years. This is our second business that we've had in town. I live in the city, I vote. Everything that has to do with the city impacts my family as well as everyone else around. This particular address, though, I think it would be a really disservice to see that house just sit there and be empty and not utilized the way that it could be. If you didn't tour when they did the open house, you really missed out, because it is pretty spectacular. If you had an elevator, I'd be living in that house. Too many stairs for me. So I hope that when you get to that point, when you really hear their story and reevaluate everything, I really, really hope that you have grace, because there isn't a person sitting in this room that hasn't made a mistake, and they've corrected it or whatnot, but this is everyone's time, first time doing life, and I hope that you support 128 East Pine, because I think it's such a valuable asset to our downtown.
Thank you. Thank you. I couldn't agree more that the house in question is a lovely home. Will you state your name for Ruth Ann? My name is Pat Ponzak, Cadillac. It is not the only lovely home in our lovely city. I think that as an argument means that probably we should rezone every other lovely home that we have. This lovely home is right next door to the book nook, so the property is contiguous, so perhaps we should rezone it because it's contiguous with a different kind of zoning. Okay, so we get that rezoned, and then the next house, which is 130 Pine Street, it now becomes contiguous with that house, so then it probably should be rezoned as well. And the next house going up Pine Street becomes contiguous with those homes, and the next house, and the next house, and the next house, until you get to the courthouse. Now, I know that's ridiculous. All of this is ridiculous. Thank you. We are having a hearing about the house too, so you'll have a chance to speak at that point too, if this is about the Pine Street property.
It is.
But...
But I wasn't sure when to go, so I am here right now. I am Connie Shippers, and I own Fill the Gap Personal Assistance Services, and I had the pleasure, as I'm trying to do two things at once here.
I'll wait till you're signed in.
Thank you. And I've had the pleasure of, this was the very first house when I started my business two years ago this month, to serve, and I employ 47 women, many of them live in this community. They worked hours at this home, so it usually takes four to five women, a good 20 hours to clean this home, and we have loved this home the best way that we possibly could. We have, I don't know necessarily what's going on with zoning, but all I know is, this has been an asset to our community. I have hired more women than I could have ever imagined that are able to help here, as well as other properties in the area. So some are Mesaki County, not Wexford County, and I'm not even saying where, but it has truly been my pleasure to hire women in our community that normally can't work. They are young moms, they are people that have had really hard time in life, some are older women. I have women in their 60s and 70s that work for me because they just want a few extra hours and want to make some extra money, and I pay my women well. And I'm just here to say I'm supporting 128 Pine Street, whatever is going on, because it's been an asset to our community. And another thing that I just want to bring up is I've had the opportunity to go purchase things for the guests that come, give them resources. I've purchased things from the Sweet Shop, all of our coffee shops, I've had developed relationships with them to bring in gift baskets and do different things from our community. Heather's shop, and they ask me, they ask, "Where can we go to get this?", and we make recommendations of where they can go. So I'm just saying, I'm in support of this, whatever's going on, if you would just consider this. Yeah, give the extra grace that Heather was talking about.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cheyanna Smalley. I live right across from 128 Pine Street. I actually live in 121 East Pine Street, in apartment four, and I've been there for going on three years now, and I actually do enjoy having people that are able to rent out that area. It makes it more pleasant to have people there, and be a part of the community, and get to know us, and who we are here in Cadillac, and be able to explore the businesses that have opened up, give new businesses more life and more income. Essentially, we are a very small town, a lot of us retired, and what I actually do is work with retirement community. But I do like enjoying being able to have people that are able to come with a positive outcome with being able to visit Cadillac, and how much they love the Airbnb, how much they love being able to find out the natural resources that we have as far as our community downtown, being able to open it up a little bit more. Change isn't always easy, but it is always nice to be able to explore that. Life is ever-changing, and I don't think we should be so close-minded to change, because that's what life is all about. I appreciate you guys giving me this time, and I am in favor of it being rezoned and them being able to do their business. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lee Ramsey, and I live at 121 East Pine Street Apartment Three, and I've been here, oh, going on six years, and we were familiar with the, well, we knew the people who lived at 128 East Pine, right across the street, and we were sorry when they moved, but I will say that it came to my attention that there were some concern about it being noisy, or having an Airbnb or rental in the area would cause problems with the community because it would be noisy, and I'm just here to say, living right across the street, we never heard any disturbances when it became a short-term rental, and we feel like it would be an asset to the community. It's nice to have people there instead of it being a vacant building, because that's just asking for problems, you know, if it's just a vacant, still-standing house, home, dwelling, however you want to define it, and it was really nice to have that extra people there, and they were all very friendly, we never had any problems out of anybody, so if you would have the grace of mind and just to consider rezoning that property, it would be much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say one more thing. Oh, no.
There will be a hearing, you could say another thing at the hearing. We only get one shot at it.
Okay, no, that's all right.
Thank you, sorry.
Hi, I'm Andy Van Alst, and, you know, this is Happy Easter. This is my third Easter, dealing with short-term rentals, so that's really a lot of fun. I wasn't gonna get up here and talk right now, because I figured I could save it for the public hearing, but when they were talking about the management of the city, I couldn't help but think about the threat, right? And the threat that Marcus said is incidents affected my children, my wife, and me in many ways that cannot and should not be dismissed as pure political discourse, or an unfortunate byproduct of public service. And then later in the article, it says, "According to the records, alleged malicious use of telecommunications was intended to terrorize, frighten, intimidate, threaten, harass, molest, annoy, and disturb the peace of the individuals named in the case." And that's how we feel when you live adjoining a short-term rental, it happens very often. I talked to Ruth Ann, she said you can't compare that, but I can. These people are threatening, they're right next door, so I wanted to bring that up, because it has to do with what they talked about earlier, about the situation that we're in. We have two new council members, and TI switched her position, and I feel like that's a result of the leadership from the city manager, as Marcus, and John Wallace has been pushing this stuff too. So I think that, yeah, they should be accountable. We wouldn't be having this discussion if they had been doing their job, Carla would be sitting there, everybody would still be the same position that we were, but it has gone into a tailspin and put the mayor, the previous mayor, in an unsustainable position. And so I think that that's what I wanted to come in with, because of what they said. I also was curious about these girls, I wonder how they would feel if their apartments were switched over to zone for a short-term rental, since they're right there. Why not? They can get booted, right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody else, let me check to make sure I go to the next thing. The consent agenda, right?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Elmas?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, thank you. Next, we have a proclamation. And there are some members of the Cadillac Mayor's Youth Council here, who, would you guys come up and maybe introduce yourselves? This is an Earth Day proclamation, and the youth council are cosponsors for the Cadillac Earth Day that is gonna be happening on Sunday, tomorrow is Earth Day, but the event is going to be happening on Sunday, the 27th. So I'm gonna read this, and first of all, introduce yourselves.
My name is Martin Petcha.
I'm Lillian Allen. I'm Kylie Sandell.
Thank you, okay, and here's the proclamation. Earth Day proclamation. Whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges, such as global health issues, food and water shortages, and economic struggles, and whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a moral right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth, and whereas it is understood that the citizens of the global community must step forward and take action to create a green economy to combat the aforementioned global challenges, and whereas a green economy can be achieved on the individual level through educational efforts, public policy, and consumer activism campaigns, and whereas it is necessary to broaden and diversify this global movement to achieve maximum success, and whereas Earth Day is the beginning of a new year for environmental stewardship commitments, to implement sustainability efforts and commit to an Earth Day resolution, and furthermore, let it be known that the city of Cadillac hereby encourages the residents, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth globally on April 22nd, 2025, and commit to building a sustainable and green economy. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Mayor TI Shippers, hereby pledge this Earth Day, April 27th, 2025, to support green economy initiatives in the city of Cadillac and encourage others to undertake similar efforts. And this is for you guys, and we can put it at the Earth Day thing if you'd like. Thank you so much. Thanks for your efforts. Okay, let's see, where are we next? Public hearings. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first public hearing this evening is to consider the adoption of an ordinance amending the city zoning map regarding 128 East Pine Street. There are staff present that are gonna be giving a presentation, as well as ownership of the property here as well, that's gonna provide some additional details. But I think before starting any of that, it's important, not just for the public, but also for city council, especially with new members on the city council, just to provide, dare I call it, a basic sort of 101 on local governance and policy. This is a particular situation where, in this instance, the use that was occurring several years ago on the site, that being a short-term rental-type use, was occurring without explicit permission from the city. There was an issue with that. The city and the property owner resolved that issue, and throughout a duration of time, the property owner did go back and reboot and restart the process, which is their right to do, in a proper fashion, so that it is then before you this evening, finally, for, essentially for adjudication. That process doesn't just start with city council, it does ultimately end with city council, but it starts with the planning commission. The planning commission does not have to favorably recommend to city council that the zoning change occur. In this instance, the planning commission did favorably recommend that the zoning change, which is from one commercial district to another commercial district, do occur. Whether or not the short-term rental use is to occur ever on that site again, and I know I'm being presumptuous, but should the zoning change occur, that particular use is not allowed by right, and what that means... And what that means is that whoever owns that property, if it's in the zoning district that would allow that use to occur, they would still have to go and apply for a special use permit and go back in front of the Planning Commission for that determination as to whether or not the property is suitable for that particular use. The Planning Commission might agree, or they may not agree. That's not what is being discussed and/or determined as a part of the hearing this evening. And so I just wanted to provide that additional context before you start hearing some of the details about what the Planning Commission had talked about, what they had considered, as well as some of the details that you're going to hear in terms of use of that property from the, you know, from the property owner, just as a sort of a foundation, so. John?
He's right there.
There you are.
Good evening. John Wallace, Community Development Director for the City of Cadillac. Yes, this particular case has been before council and has been before the Planning Commission at least two times, as Marcus kind of led off with the Planning Commission has, on two occasions, recommended approval for this use. The owner is Matthew McCall Stillman. At the time that we were going, before the Planning Commission, the applicant representative was Cynthia Wotilla. Not sure who exactly is going to be presenting for the applicant this evening. But just to give you some background, this property was before the Planning Commission in February of twenty twenty-three for proposed rezoning. At that time, the Planning Commission recommended approval by the City Council. The City Council denied the rezoning. The home of, at one twenty-eight Pine, was subsequently rented out as a short-term rental. The city then pursued enforcement action as the rental action was a zoning violation, since the city did not approve the rezoning. At the time, it was before the Planning Commission. The home was not any longer being rented and was vacant and up for sale. I don't know what their current status is today, but a short time ago, that was the situation. The owner has since come back for a second time and applied on December twenty-three, 2024, with the Planning Commission to have the property rezoned from the OS-two district to the B-two district. The reason for the rezoning was to allow the home on the property to be used as a short-term rental, and that means for rental periods of less than thirty days. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning application by the City Council. At the meeting, letters of support were provided by the Downtown Development Authority and area residents and businesses. So at this point in time, we had a case where both the Planning Commission and the Downtown Development Authority boards were recommending approval for the rezoning. I have a few slides on what the owner provided for narrative on the application. The applicant submits the proposed rezoning is consistent with the purpose and intent of the City of Cadillac zoning ordinance and master plan for the following reasons. The city has confirmed that the B-two district is appropriate for short-term rental and that the subject property is a natural extension of an existing B-two district. The master plan objectives include promoting the conversion of single-family dwellings into business uses and building a strong and energetic downtown that is pedestrian-oriented and comprises a range of business uses. The DDA objectives include promoting the economic development and maintaining and improving property values within the district. The property has been improved beyond the standard finishes for housing in the neighborhood. The amenities make it particularly suitable for use as a short-term rental. The yard is surrounded by high solid wood fence to reduce noise. The game room is located in the lower level for further noise reduction, and there is ample parking in the attached garage and in the extensive driveways. The rental rate for this property is five times the market average for the area, and therefore allowing a short-term rental use will not negatively impact affordable housing in the area. It has been on the market for several months with no interest from potential buyers as to a full-time residence. The rezoning request conforms with the zoning ordinance's consideration for such amendment in that it is convenient with the master plan's, master plan zoning objectives noted above. It is consistent with adjacent property uses. Rezoning this property will increase property values and bring tourists and visitors to the downtown district. As an operating rental, the owners employed six cleaning staff and two handymen for maintenance and repairs. Additionally, regular contractors for pool service, snow plowing, yard service, and delivery are also employed. At the last meeting where the Planning Commission recommended approval, there were letters of support submitted. Those included the City of Cadillac Downtown Development Authority, Aaron Kennard, Amy Visagotti, Alan Garrow from Einstein Cycles, Shiana Smalley, Connie Shepherds with Fill-in-the-Gap Personal Assistant Services, and Brian Williams from the Blue Heron Cafe. If you look at this slide, you can see in the outline of red, that is the proposed site. The uses around it, well, to the west, moving towards Mitchell Street, you have the book nook, which is commercial uses. You also have a series of small multifamily rentals, either duplexes, four-unit, and so forth. There are two single families that are south of the site. If you look at the photographs for the adjacent uses, here is a duplex unit, which is located immediately adjacent to the home. The book nook, which is a NAB-two zone, is located immediately adjacent to the property to the west. Across, directly across the street, you have a four-unit residential apartment building. To the northwest of the site, next to the four-unit apartment building, you do have public parking. And if you look at the zoning, you can see the site outlined in yellow is the site that they're proposing to be two, be B-two. And you can see that there's a large block of B-two located immediately west of the site. And you can see that the property to the south is OS-two and also to the east. So there is no single-family zoning on that particular block. And the OS-two also provides for some fairly intense uses. And you can also see on the block to the south that the B-two district extends all the way from Mitchell out to Shelby Street. This is one of the marketing photos that was put online for the facility. You can get an idea of how much perhaps above the area standard the house has been developed. Site and use analysis. The house at one twenty-eight Pine Street has been... Is there any way we can move that? The house at one twenty-eight East Pine Street has been approved beyond the standard quality of housing in the neighborhood, both in the interior and the exterior. The high quality and amenities found in this home make it particularly suitable to be used as a short-term rental. The home is not well-suited to be converted to an apartment building because of the existing layout and the cost it would take to put in multiple plumbing fixtures for a multifamily. Due to the already-developed nature of this property, the impact of the rezoning will likely be minimal. The property would probably not be developed for the range of uses in B-two simply because it's already fully developed. The current zoning district in which the home is located allows for a mixture of single-family homes, offices, and personal services. It even allows for multifamily development by special use permit. So the intensity of uses that can be done on this, on the current zoning are very comparable to what could be done as it, as it's being used as a short-term rental. It's just that the OS-two is not one of the districts that was allocated for short-term rental. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the zoning districts for the blocks both north and south of the proposed site. The B-one and B-two districts are two of only four districts in which the short-term rentals are permitted in the city. At present, there are few, if any, short-term rentals within the B-one or B-two districts, which is the downtown area. Also, there are a few opportunities for additional short-term rentals to be created in these districts. So if we're looking citywide, and we're only looking at four districts, and we have almost no, maybe no, or very close to no short-term rentals in the B-one and B-two, or the ability to do additional ones, we have very little opportunity to accommodate tourism in this fact that they would want a short-term rental. Given that downtown Cadillac does not have a hotel and few, if any, short-term rental units, short-term rentals are really the only opportunity for a portion of the tourist population to experience the downtown, and they can do so without the need to be driving. For this reason, creating more short-term rentals in and near the downtown is a positive thing. And you heard from some folks earlier today talking about those very positive factors. People staying here on vacation would likely be spending more money per capita than the year-round residents, which would be good for the downtown businesses. This slide just simply outlines the fact that the rezoning process is two-step. It has to go to the Planning Commission ultimately to be approved by the City Council. Rezoning considerations are standard questions that on every rezoning we go through with the Planning Commission. And you can, I can read through those quickly. Is the proposed classification compatible with surrounding land uses and zone district classifications? Is the proposed rezoning consistent with the city master plan? If not, or is questionable, does the request represent an appropriate use of the land based on changes and/or other factors that have occurred subsequent to the adoption of the plan? Are existing public facilities and services capable of accommodating the land uses permitted by the proposed classification? Is the proposed classification equal to or more appropriate than the existing zone district classification? Does the request meet the criteria required by the zoning ordinances for the intended use? And the Planning Commission determined, and they're taking action to approve it, that they felt that these questions could be answered in the affirmative. The Planning Commission finds that the rezoning application to place this property into the B-two district to be equal to or better than its current designation as OS-two, the fact that the site is fully developed with a residential structure and supporting accessory uses will limit the use for the full range of activities that may be permissible in the B-two district. And the proposed use as a short-term rental will be beneficial to the downtown. The City of Cadillac Downtown Development Authority has written a letter of support for this rezoning. Maintaining it as a short-term rental will also help ensure the proper maintenance of the property, as it is common for renters to rate the facility online. And finally, just Planning Commission action. The Planning Commission recommends to the City Council that the resolution approving the change of the zoning district classification for one twenty-eight Pine Street from OS-two to B-two be approved. That's all I have.
Is there the applicant here to talk?
I believe so. Oh, right here.
I'm right next to you. Hello. I have a presentation because I'm very visual. So if it helps me, I'm hoping that helps all of you. To the three of you that I've talked to several times, hello again.
Could you state your name?
Oh, yeah, I'm Sarah Gladwell. I am one of the owners of one-two-eight East Pine. One of the other owners is here with me as well to give a presentation after me, so you'll get to hear from both of us. From the two of you who are new to the council, congratulations and nice meeting you. I am very nervous tonight because this means a lot to me, and I've stood in front of you guys a few times at this point. I will say, tonight has felt a little bit better than other nights where we've heard a lot of negative backlash. So today, I'm feeling a little bit better than normal. But I just wanted to go through, for all of you, how we kind of ended up in this situation, because I know that there's been a lot of narrative around it, and I want to make sure that we just kind of address how we landed where we landed and why we're trying to rezone it from OS-two to B-two. Of course, first and foremost, I would love to run it as a short-term rental. That's why we bought the house. That's what I'm uniquely skilled to do. With that being said, it has been shut down for the last six months. So I've had six months to extensively explore any other option besides short-term rentals that are legal to operate in the current zoning district. And so I just wanted to go through kind of the brick walls that we hit there and why we're looking at rezoning it, even if, on the other side of this, when and if we apply for that short-term rental permit, why this still makes sense to rezone regardless. So can we click to the next slide? Okay, I can't even read this all the way back here. In regards to this current request to have a public hearing for this rezone, we want to be explicitly clear that right now we are not requesting to operate it as a vacation rental. At this time, we have heard the pushback and understand the complexity of the request. And though that is our obvious preference, we are coming before the City Council strictly to focus on the rezone from B-two or from OS-two to B-two. So what's wrong with OS-two? Because we've had all the time to take a look at this, this is the current allowed uses under the OS-two zoning. And so I have gone down every single one of these just to do the legwork for you guys, to do the legwork for us. We brought on investors in this project, and you can imagine how their response was when we were no longer making money. And so I've spent a lot of time just trying to figure out, okay, is this a house that is a viable option for another use besides short-term rentals? Because at the end of the day, my priority is to make sure that we're making some sort of money on this property that we poured a lot of money into. And so the next slide, I kind of talk through what some of those options are. Midterm and long-term rentals are one of those options. I have it listed at a nightly room, individual room rate. I have listed it as available as a whole house, available for people to rent long-term. I have called every single hospital in the area. I have called every single college that's around. I have it listed on local websites for long-term housing, and I have gotten zero inquiries over the last six months. A big portion of that is because a lot of the long-term housing that is available around us is significantly less expensive to rent than what our mortgage is. Our mortgage on that house is hefty, and so it's not a great option for those that are looking for a renter-friendly solution. We have gone down a rabbit hole of trying to figure out if there is any other business that we can run out of it besides long-term rentals. So we have looked at med spas, doctors' offices, dental offices, anything that you can sometimes see in other towns that are in residential homes. And we keep hitting a brick wall there because every option that is an office space requires an elevator, which would require us to essentially obliterate the inside of the house, and it would require us to put another six figures into the house. We've already put a quarter of a million dollars into the house to bring it to the standard that it is today. And so we were hitting brick walls with that as well. That wasn't a viable option for us. Primary and secondary homes, we have had several tours for people who are looking at it as a secondary home. Problem with that is they always choose a lakefront property over our property. And it's because our property is the nicest property in the area by far, and so it's not necessarily the smartest investment for them. And so we always lose out to the lake houses. We've also looked at a halfway house. We've looked at turning it into some sort of a sober living facility. We thought that might be a nice use as well. And so I connected with MAR, which is a group out of Holland that kind of facilitates the halfway homes all over Michigan. And they sat with me and kind of looked at the numbers on what we could bring in in this house, because I'm desperate for it to make some sort of money at this point. And they had bad news for me as well. They were like, look, even if it was the highest-end halfway home in Michigan, you still would be hitting about half of what your mortgage is. And so we just hit dead end after dead end after dead end. And so I've just explored those for you guys, just to let you know that we're not exclusively, you know, only hoping that it can be a short-term rental. We were very open to trying to make something work that still is an asset for Cadillac outside of short-term rentals. So why B-two? B-two opens up a few more uses, even outside of short-term rentals. That may make sense. It opens up the ability for us to look at venue spaces for graduation parties, for weddings, for baby showers, things like that. It also opens up the option for short-term rentals, which is of course my preferred option. But of course, we would have to get a special use permit. So even if you guys said yes to the rezone today, that doesn't allow us to open back up. It just allows us to consider applying for that permit. So that's our big push for why we want it to be B-two, because even if we aren't So that's our big push for why we want it to be B two, because even if we aren't allowed to short-term rent it on the backside of this when we do apply for that, it at least positions us to where we could sell it to other business owners who may have another creative solution for it, because right now it's just, it's not sellable to anyone who is interested. Okay, so kind of the timeline of events, I'll go through this quickly because John did a really great job of, of kind of describing how we ended up in this situation. This property sat for six months before we ever purchased it, and Matt and I were looking at properties all over the state. I'm very passionate about taking homes that otherwise might be forgotten about and making them an asset to Michigan. I also have a huge pet peeve with the crappy short-term rentals in Michigan and operators who just don't value the community that they are pouring themselves into, and you see a lot of Airbnbs that just aren't the greatest quality, and I think that Michigan deserves great quality accommodations, and this house in particular looked like an incredible historic home, and so the numbers didn't make sense to purchase this house, but we had a vision for it, and we just felt that if we built it, people would come. And so we decided, you know what? We know that this is the nicest-built property in, in the area, and it's otherwise not a great investment for, but for this specific use, we really feel like we could maintain the property in a way that would, would continue being an asset for Michigan and the City of Cadillac, so we move forward on the purchase. Next slide, please. So this is what we saw online when we purchased the property. It explicitly says that it's not allowed nor not allowed in any zoning district. You can click on that document, I think it's posted online, if any of you wanted to kind of read through what we saw. Unfortunately, I think that in between when we purchased it and when we launched, there was a new interpretation of the zoning ordinance that said that the current interpretation allows it in only B two, B one, T two, and T one districts, which was different than what we had saw when we purchased this. And so I think we just, it's one of those things where we got caught up, perfect timing in a storm that we didn't know that we were entering into. And so we were paying attention to the existing regulation. This was very common in every market that we were looking in where the state was trying to decide what they wanted to do at the state level for regulation, and so all the cities were just kind of not making an opinion on it, and it looked like Cadillac was doing the same thing, and so this was very familiar to us. It just was something where it was like, look, there just really isn't anything yet, and so it's TBD, and so we moved forward on purchasing the house. I can't read any of that. Okay, so this is where we were talking about, right after we launched, we launched in January of twenty-twenty-three, right after we launched, we got contacted by John Wallace, who was like, hey, there's a new interpretation online, you're not in B two zoning, you're not legally operating, and we were like, oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry, tell us what steps we need to take. And so at that point in time, we applied to be rezoned the first time, two years ago, and so we went through that process, and we got a unanimous yes from the planning department, and to be honest, we thought that was the only step we had to take. We are real estate investors, this is what we do full-time, but we had never gone through a rezone process before, and so that's on us. We should have done more due diligence. We just thought that after the planning department said yes, that we were good to go, and we had no intent of like dropping it halfway through and all of a sudden now continuing to illegally operate because we were, you know, under the impression that we were rezoned. And so this is where we had been communicating with John Wallace, and at the time, I was so confused because we got this text saying, you know, hey, is there anything else you need from us? And he's like, nope, you're good to go. And so we thought that meant we're good to go, like we're good to operate, you know? We got the rezone, everyone's saying yes, like we're, we're doing things correctly. He was saying we're good to go with just the planning commission. Now we have to go in front of the city council. And so I just show this text because it's one of those where this is, I think, the core of the miscommunication, where we thought we were two thumbs up, and we were not, and that's something that we should have dug into more. Now, looking back, we really should have hired an attorney on the front end of this instead of the second time around because we wouldn't have made that mistake, but this is where our mistake was. So when you hear everybody else reference a mistake that we had made and offering us some grace, this is right where our mistake was. So I always ask the question, you know, why were we never emailed or called? Because afterward, I know a big point was that everyone was saying that we were ignoring letters from the city after we had gone through that initial planning review and we had gotten a unanimous approval. Now, sitting through several city council meetings, because I've been to almost every single one since September when we shut down, we are not the most important thing on your agenda, right? You guys have way bigger issues than a property that was being asked to be turned into a short-term rental, and so, you know, now looking back, I mean, you guys did have our emails, you did have our phone numbers, but I completely understand why it got lost in the mix, right? This is not the top priority, and so it is, of course, our top priority, but that's why the letters, the letters didn't get received, but the second we did get an email from someone saying, hey, you are illegally operating and now you're being sued by the city, we responded immediately. And so I just want to clarify kind of where that confusion stemmed from. I know John already mentioned this as well. This is just something that we were keeping an eye on, the regulations that were being developed as this whole thing kind of unfolded, and so another short-term rental host had sent us this, that was the proposed new zoning map for the proposed new regulations, and it showed the entire block that our property is on being rezoned to B two. So we thought that, you know, our property was already rezoned, but we were like, oh, they're going to rezone it all the way up to the next block. And so I saw this, and again, this was probably in May of twenty-twenty-four. I was like, oh, still good, you know, this, this looks great. Was wrong again, so. So then we stopped operating once we found out that the city was suing us, and we were like, whoa, this is, you know, way further along than we ever anticipated. Like John had mentioned, we did pay all of the legal expenses that the city had incurred for having to open up a lawsuit against us because we were surprised and felt awful that we hadn't handled it correctly. And then I did go back and watch this particular meeting that we're in now that happened originally about two years ago, just to listen to, you know, you guys' opinion, three of your opinions at that point in time on what you were concerned about and why you said no at that point in time. And the main reasons why you had said no, other than that we didn't show up to the meeting at all, because we didn't know it existed, was are we good operators? You had no context at that point on whether we were going to operate in a professional way or if we were just going to start parties non-stop. Is it good for the neighbors was another main question, and then did you guys want to handle it separately from the regulation that you were already developing for the rest of the city? And so that's why I really tried to prioritize today, making sure that our relationships with our neighbors was a priority in this conversation, that you could hear from them directly. We have five-star reviews, you know, for our property. We've also reached out to the police department to make sure that we've gotten no complaints over the year and a half that we did operate. There's no phone calls, and so now you've got more proof than you had two years ago that we are professional operators and we do care about our neighbors' opinions that are impacted by our short-term rentals. So today's intent is just to remind everyone that we are not asking for this to be a short-term rental. That is a whole separate meeting. I've made my peace with it being a short-term rental or us selling the property. Either way, I just don't want the property to rot, right? I want this property to remain an asset for the city. Of course, I would love to continue running it as a short-term rental, but above all else, I just want to make sure that that property stays in good condition regardless of what happens to it after this. And so whether you guys want us to sell it to someone else or you want us to continue operating it as a short-term rental, it really needs to be rezoned for either of those solutions, and so I am happy to accommodate either. I just don't want the property to rot. And so that's just a reiteration of what I just said, and so that's my entire presentation. So I know Matt wants to share a little bit as well from his perspective, but I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. My name is Matthew McCall Stellman. Sarah, thank you very much. Just sitting here to be a part of this community and hearing some of the things that have been voiced today has impacted me. You know, the store owners, the business owners that have already kind of spoken on behalf of us in a positive light, it really means a lot to me, and it, I know the Sarah and Ethan and my wife Sam over here as well. The more I heard that, the more I had buy-in just sitting here. I heard about the PFAS, we've been hearing about it, and that's got to be a really tough challenge for you guys to deal with right now. And like Sarah mentioned, you got bigger fish to fry. I get that. So all I can do is kind of go over some points that I want to hit on, and I'm going to do it with bullet point form, because I know you've heard plenty today about this, and hopefully we can expedite that. And to the folks that are going through those issues with PFAS, my heart goes out to you guys. I know this is, this is a tough subject for all of us, but if we're all working to continue to grow this community, you know, when I drove in here, I drove down and I saw the market. I saw that, the new construction being built up, the pavilion, and I was like, this is so beautiful. The way this downtown is coming together, the direction the city has to go, I think it's going to be awesome. We do want to be a part of that. And that's just some of the stuff that I've just been thinking about as I, I heard from the people speaking on behalf here, and the last thing I'll say before I get to my points is, when I saw the thing about, you know, one of the gentlemen back here was saying they're worried about, what does short-term rent, I'm sorry, actually, I'm a little nervous, sorry. They were saying they're worried about short-term rentals and what that means. Our ranking review system on Airbnb is a four-point-nine-two with sixty-three reviews right now. Now, what does that mean to you? Some people in this room probably just don't care, and that's okay, but what I'll tell you what it means to us as business owners, it means if we aren't nearly getting a five-star for every twenty stays, we don't stay in business. And you can't get five-star reviews if you're not doing an amazing job of managing that and keeping everybody sound and happy. We have noise monitors in there. We have surveillance. We have, we try to really keep a, a really strong arm on the situation, make sure there are no disturbances to the neighbors, and thank you to the neighbors that showed up today too, because they were here to firsthand report that. And as Sarah mentioned, we also did reach out to the city. We did find out, hey, there have been no reports, there've been no call-ins on this. So this is also the opportunity to, you, which I really implore you to do, and I, and I'm going to be very thankful, to prove that a great short-term rental can exist, and this could be the map work to creating that and creating that drive of tourism here. I really think, if nothing else, we can be a staple for you guys, and I think you'll be very proud you did it. So recapping the points in my simpler, less beautiful way of, as Sarah did, why we bought the property. I purchased one-twenty-eight Pine Street in October twenty-two with a small group of friends and partners. We were drawn to Cadillac and saw this as a way to create something that fits with the community and something to be a part of the neighborhood to grow, because honestly, we just really liked it. The two lakes around here were gorgeous, we wanted to see what a home like, like this could do. At that time, there were no short-term rental restrictions, and we believed the OS two zoning allowed for that use. And as Sarah mentioned, some of that changed right after purchase. Number two, what made this property different? The home is one of the largest residential lots in the city, and it's actually made up of two parcels. One is B two, one is OS two. So we weren't completely off when we did that. It was a mix-up, and we definitely own that. It's a bit of an outlier, this type of property, but it's hard to use for typical long-term rentals or a starter home. We thought it would be a great fit for short-term rental guests, families, retirees, and travelers who can enjoy downtown and support local businesses. Beyond that, as it's been on the market, we've had interest, most people are second-time homeowners that want to buy here, but they also say, you know what, I want to be able to rent it when I'm not present because it's an expensive thing to hold, and it's true. So that's been one of our big pushbacks from the current market of potential buyers. So number three, how the confusion happened. When the city reached out in February twenty-three, we responded right away and applied for a rezoning. The planning commission recommended approval, and after receiving positive feedback from staff, we truly believed we had completed the necessary process. We weren't aware that council action was still required. That's on us. We didn't know, but we never intended to avoid any step. Number four, owning it and making it right. When the city filed a legal complaint in July twenty-four, I took responsibility. We shut down operations immediately as asked. We paid all those legal fees, including the city's. We entered a consent judgment to close the chapter the right way. The intent has always been to do things the right way. We had a messed up, a misunderstanding, we've been working to correct that ever since. I then brought on a legal team to make sure we follow the process fully and transparently from that point forward. Number five, what we did next. We submitted a new rezoning request, this time with legal support, asking to move from OS two to B two for the one parcel that we missed initially, the zoning that now allows STRs through a special use permit. We went back in front of the planning commission in December twenty-four, explained everything clearly, and apologized for the earlier confusion. The commission again, well, the commission then unanimously recommended approval. John Wallace, I wanted to say thank you to, that was a great presentation. We fully understand that rezoning does not mean we get to operate right away. We still need that special use permit. We'll still need to apply for that, and we're prepared to file, to follow every condition and requirement, no questions asked. The local impact, there have been zero complaints, no police reports or disturbances at this property. We worked with local Cadillac residents for cleaning and maintenance, and we stayed on good terms with them. The Wildflower Bakery has, has been a value, Connie's company has been a value, and as we've learned, it's employed many parent, many young women, many young, uh, single fa, I'm sorry, mothers to work in this property, and I think that's been great for all of us. All right. We're not some big operation. This is a small group trying to be part of the company and do things right. We've also had positive feedback from downtown business, oh, yeah, we said that, visitors staying at the property walk into town because it is walkable, and it supports restaurants, shops, and leaves a good impression with Cadillac. That's what we want to keep building, connections that support the town as a whole, not just us. And my last point here was what a yes vote means. It respects the planning's commission, the planning commission's recommendation that has happened twice. It also follows the city's own zoning updates and STR management policies. It keeps control with the city through the special use permit process. It recognizes responsibility and good faith actions taken to correct earlier misunderstandings. Number five, it shows that Cadillac's processes work fairly, allowing for accountability and recovery. And in general, I really think that the direction Cadillac's going to go, if we fast-forward ten years, it's not not going there. We might as well just figure out a way, pick one single example to do perfectly if possible, to really prove that Cadillac can be a beacon of change, to continue to build the reasons for people to go to this lake, to go to that pavilion that you're building, to bring that downtown back to life. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Philiamany. I'm a lawyer with McCurdy, Botill, and Porteous, and we've been working with this group in this process to bring forward the application to rezone this property, as you've heard. If you recognized the material that John provided to you prior to this meeting and his excellent presentation, you can see how much investigation and analysis and application of the facts to the law that the plant, that the city staff and the planning commission has given this property. It is, this kind of property, when you consider the analysis and the, the relevant legal factors, really just checks all the boxes, and it's no, it's, it was really obvious to me that the decision and recommendation being unanimous was right on. I wanted to just recognize what the other speakers have stated, which is we're like two years into this journey, and over this two years, things have happened. My clients have been remarkable stewards of this property. As you've seen, it's just gorgeous, continues to be gorgeous, and it continues to be available for, you know, remarkable uses in the future. As well, the city has done investigation, has determined how important short-term rentals are, what an important use that is generally, and maybe most importantly, where those, where the short-term rental, for example, use should be allowed, and the conditions that will allow it. And that's the, what you've heard about the special use permit and, and that process that allows this, the planning commission to put conditions on an owner and on the property that are appropriate. So it's a very detailed and site-specific kind of analysis, but as you saw, what the city has produced and the, the planning commission has, has considered to date, it will be a thoughtful, comprehensive analysis, I am certain. I wanted you to consider maybe a little different dimension to my client's application, and that is a focus on the downtown. You know, this is a downtown that I've lived very near. I own a building, I, I'm in a business downtown. It's a place that I love. This particular property, as you've heard, is in a transition zone between the B two district and the residential district, and it is a, a, a natural kind of transition zone. What a change from the current zoning to the B two offers is a remarkable contribution, I think, to the downtown itself. And it is, um, a a a natural kind of transition zone. What a change from the current zoning to the B two offers um, is a remarkable contribution, I think, to the downtown itself. The property, uh, provides and checks the boxes that both the planning commission, excuse me, the, um, the master plan and the DDA has uh, determined to be really important to a vital downtown. A pedestrian-friendly sort of, um, promoting, you know, the kind of, um, uh, bodies downtown, and it is a, you know, one of a range of business uses that fits well uh, into any downtown, especially our our downtown. There really is no tourist lodging available downtown. My client's application would allow that, uh, to be a contribution to this downtown. The result, I think, of my client's, uh, stewardship of this property is, uh, really illustrated by the comments that you've heard from, uh, their neighbors and the people that are invested in the downtown. Uh, they have wholeheartedly, uh, supported this rezoning application, and you can see it was for good reason. I think that ultimately, when you consider everything, this rezone will pr- is good for tourism. And what is good for tourism is good for our downtown, and what is good for our downtown is good for this community. The downtown, uh, as you've probably felt, as I've done, as I have felt, you know, as more housing has come downtown, there's just been a completely different feel. And it's those people being downtown, some of which can be served by my client's property, that just makes it energetic and exciting and fun. I think most important from my perspective is the signal that I think, uh, an open mind and a, um, you know, uh, application, I think of the, uh, you know, thoughtful application of the the rules that apply and the law that applies to this sort of, uh, rezoning application. Um, it will signal to other, um, potential investors in in Cadillac and especially the downtown that, um, you support, this town supports, uh, someone coming in and making the kind of investment that is necessary, as my clients have done, uh, to make this downtown and our community a better place. Thank you.
All right, um, I'll open it up for public comments. If anyone has anything they would like to add to, for this issue, this specific issue of the Pine Street property.
Uh, Andy Van Oost again. You know, I keep hearing that the cops are number there, but the 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 previous lawsuit says, uh, they've been told to shut down their operation, continue to rent the house. Always has people there partying and having the cops come over in the middle of the night. So, you know, somebody's got their wires crossed. Uh, so that's, this is, this is out of the lawsuit that the city filed against them. So, you know, maybe they're getting bad information from the city, or the city attorney doesn't know what he's doing. Uh, we have, um, over two hundred petitions, again, that were signed, said that they didn't respect the short-term rentals outside of, uh, TS one, TS two, B one, and B two. And they had, um, determined that in a, in a memo that John Wallace put on the website in October of twenty-one, I believe. And so it was there before the, they bought the house, they knew it. Uh, it was codified unanimously by the city council that it would be in TS one, TS two, B one, and B two. And nobody has really complained about that. They have, um, the the lawsuit that got filed, um, was in September and settled, it was settled in September of twenty-four, and then by December of twenty-four, they had already been through the planning board commission. So it's like, oh, yeah, I think they learned their lesson. And it's not these guys, right? I I don't have anything against them. I think that, uh, yeah, if you can do something, it's a real special house, that's great. But we've been dealing with, uh, enforcement issues from the very beginning. This is still an enforcement issue. They haven't filed the enforcements with, there there are several, um, different, um, things that I can come up, but they defied the cease and desist orders at least four times. When Matthew was talking about, they got, in July of twenty-four, they did something about it. So they're going, we're not visible. We didn't know. You guys send them off all the time. So, uh, that's not really a good excuse. And the the lawsuit was talking about the health, safety, and welfare of those, of the residents, and we have people that live right around there, and that's why my concern has always been for, you know, protecting the neighborhoods and and keeping housing for our real residents, our not, not transient, it's not, not, not tourists. I think we deal with tourists. I bought a house and it didn't work out, so I lost money on it this month, and I didn't ask any of you to help me out with that or trying to help heal me. I I I ate it, you know? Uh, and I've got paperwork, if you want to see it. Um, and then, then when, um, they're talking, and I had, I have said it from the very beginning, that it feels like that there's always been the people that are doing these short-term rentals, and well over twenty of them, they were never, they were always smart, hard-working, successful people. It was unfathomable to me to believe that they just accidentally did this. I had, I think they were coached and approved through this, through people on, uh, staff or council or a combination. The city council has stood up for the short-term rental and the enforcement issues, and so I'm hoping that you can do that again. We have evidence in the podcast that, uh, Sarah gave that said that John Wallace told her it's okay. Like, okay, well, but it's not, right? So then there are other, the violations that I see, they're they're minor, but there are many. Uh, so the, they defied the many cease and desist orders. They were putting mailers in the mailboxes. That's a federal law that you can't do that. And they defied zoning over and over and over. They park across the street. Anytime that there's somebody there, they're parking across the street and, or the sidewalk, excuse me. And, you know, that, you can't do that either. Then I see that the for sale sign is in the tree lawn, and that's a zoning, that's a sign ordinance violation. And then there's a couple other signs on the property that are also in violation. You can't name your house, and I see a couple of those around town. So the zoning enforcement officer is dropping the ball again. Uh, the rental inspection, they didn't do any rental inspection when it was a short-term rental. They finally did do it for long-term rental, so that's good for them. And then I saw in the listing, it said that the owner is a Michigan licensee or something like that, and I think that means real estate licensee, but it doesn't say real estate, so that's not really par either, and I'm, I wonder if they will pay the sales tax to the state as well, so. Uh, and I don't know. I just, I I don't know. I just go, there's a a a bunch of different things that I go, we can put on a tutor class for minutia laws, you know? Uh, nobody is complaining about, uh, the Babcock House that's in the zoned area. John can put a bunch of them in his property downtown. We've got a lot of area.
That's five minutes.
So.
Is it five minutes that they have?
So we've got five minutes, but they can talk for twenty, thirty.
If that's, wasn't not part of public comment. That was part of the presentation of the.
Anyways, I think a reversal of a lawsuit would be not good.
Thank you.
I thought this was a public hearing, not public comment. So Mike Figlioli, is that I pronounced that right? Doesn't he serve on a board for the city, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority? Isn't that a conflict of interest? You've got somebody who serves on a city board, who also now is representing the client, trying to get some zoning changed? Seems a lot to me. Part of the problem is, and it wasn't mentioned in his performance eval, is that the master plan hasn't, the zoning master plan hasn't been updated in ten years. And whose responsibility is that? The city manager. So why hasn't it been updated in ten years? How come somebody in the city council hasn't asked, man, why isn't this thing updated? Because if it had been, you may have some relevant information to help you make decisions when it came to rezoning. The other thing not mentioned in his performance reviews is lack of enforcement. Lack of ordinance enforcement. Simple charter explanation. Charter spells it out. Their job is to enforce the ordinances. Why isn't Mr. Pasha held responsible for enforcing the ordinances? Why has it been two years, three, three Easters now, Andy, you said? That he's been here because there's been a lack of enforcement in terms of ordinance. You all don't wanna see it. But as as Andy said earlier, the buck stops stops with the city manager. These issues that keep coming up, that keep biting you, it's the city manager. He's not doing his job because you're not doing your job.
Hi there. My name is Dale Rice. I live right up the street from one twenty-eight East Pine, where it turns into Lincoln Street, so I drive by this house every day. I have for forty-three years. The house is probably in the best shape it's ever been in. I've I've watched the proceedings. Um, I've paid pretty close attention to all that's transpired with this debacle, if you will. But I I I gotta say, these people have done everything they've can to make this right. They went back, paid the city's attorney fees, took care of their own, took the right path. They made a mistake. They screwed up. They followed some advice they were given, and I think you need to give them a second chance. I think they can do great things with this property. I I think they did. You know, I, again, I saw most of the people that were renting the property, and, you know, it it was great. I saw a lot of good quality people, and I saw them downtown all the time. And and I've talked to a lot of people that feel the same way. I have family that lives directly behind it, up on the hill. And, uh, she's been there for six years, and there's never been an issue. I don't know where all the police reports came from, but it wasn't within the last six years. So and prior to that, it was a Bob and Troy house. So they've done their homework. Uh, I gotta say, give them a second chance. It's good for Cadillac, you know? I I'm a short-term rental fan in the correct area. I think we need things like this. I I'm a business owner here. I have customers come to town. They stay overnight. I would love to be able to offer something like this to them. So, you know, I've been here a long time, and I see this as a positive for our community, and I think we need to do things like this in order to grow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, me again. I'm standing up this time because my husband and I own a building in Cadillac. We have renters that live above where we live. This place is so unique, and I have connected with the families from Texas. Families who came here for funerals, families who came here for, um, a fiftieth anniversary celebration. And families that, it's hard to find a place when my family, we, we look for Airbnbs, we go to VRBO and look for places to stay that can hold more than twelve people. It's hard to find a place that can hold that many people. And this is such a beautiful property. I personally see no other use that can happen with this because it's so amazing. The people that I've met, granted, other partyers, sure there are, but the people that I came in contact with that were that left healthy food because they'd been shopping in the area, people that came and spent a lot of money, I saw their bags. People that spend money. This is not a place, I mean, the places that we have rented in town, my husband and I have owned properties, my family and I grew up here, we had rental homes. They were not. They're not the nicest. They're not the best. We're looking for quality people that come here, stay here, that can afford to stay here. It's not low-income housing. These are, it's a gorgeous property. People pay a lot of money. And generally speaking, ninety-nine percent of the time, treat it very well. Because if they don't, they will never be invited back again because we come in as cleaners and go, it was a mess. We will tell Sarah, do not rent to them again. So the property has been respected, loved. I'm just saying, I can find no other purpose as someone who's grown up in this area, and I'm just gonna stand by the people who've said, you know, the wonderful things about it that, yeah, please reconsider just the rezoning process of this whole thing.
Good afternoon. My name is, uh, Joshua Stafford. I'm a licensed Realtor in the state of Michigan underneath City Two Shore. Tonight, I wanted to address a couple of things. As a Realtor, it's not actually going to be about business-related things at all. In fact, I'd actually like to talk about the owners. Sorry, I'm a bit nervous. I had a pleasure of meeting Ethan and Sarah, the owners of the Pine Street Home, a couple of times now. They have, uh, come into the office. We've had an event for young professionals that they have attended to. And, uh, I had the honor of touring the home, and I will say it is beyond unique. Once again, I don't wanna talk about the home. I wanna talk about them and what they could offer to the city and our community, which I believe is important, and it's not something that's been addressed. Sarah and Ethan are beyond lovely people. They're very passionate about the business that they can bring to the city. I mean, they could have gone anywhere, as they said. You know, they've looked at properties all over Michigan. Why choose the city? Why choose Cadillac? And I believe it's because they see a vision. As a young professional myself, I'm twenty-four years old, that's trying to start, you know, a career in real estate, I can look up to that. And it is my fear that if this is taken away from them and another investor were to purchase this property, it's not only going to ruin the chances of something beautiful happening for the city, it's also going to ruin the neighborhood for not only the residents nearby, but future residences, as the sale of the home could raise prices in the market. Once again, I don't wanna get too far into that. I know Sarah has a uh, a pretty high count on Instagram followers and TikTok followers, which I'm a young guy. I I follow that kind of stuff on social media and stuff like that. What I'm trying to say is those numbers could bring in people not just from Michigan, not just Cadillac, but other states that want to explore unique homes, that want to come to Michigan to see the the Sleeping Bear Dunes, or just tourists. This is a heavily tourist town that brings in a lot of beautiful attraction. Once again, not just from Michigan itself, but entirety of the United States. And I believe this home could do just that. It's unique. It's not a lakefront property. It's a property just behind, you know, downtown Cadillac, and it could, it could bring an influx of people. I do believe that it's not only in the city's best interests, but the town of Cadillacs as well to invite the owners back into having that rental property. I believe that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, I'm gonna close public comments as part of this hearing and open it up to council.
What you looking at me for?
I'm just looking left and right.
Okay. I don't have a comment. I have a clarification.
Yes.
But seeing as I'm the elder statesman here, if my memory doesn't hold me well, you two jump in, please. Matt, I I think you said that when you got the letter, you shut down. If I remember correctly, they asked for two months and extended two months because they had rentals in place, and we allowed that. Correct? Oh, I like being right. And for that, they were gonna pay a lawyer bill, which Marcus or Owen, that was twenty-five hundred dollars?
I don't remember the exact amount.
I don't recall. That number sticks in my head. But yeah, we were nice enough to allow them that, and, and twenty-five hundred dollar lawyer bill, I think, is, from what I've seen, one night on the weekends at the house. So, we were pretty good to let them do that. And that's not a comment, just a clarification.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question about process again. Same one I asked you, T.I., but just if we approve the zoning change, and, and then they go back to Planning Commission to request the special use permit, and Planning Commission approves the special use permit, is that the end of it? Or does that special use permit have to come back to City Council?
That is the end of the process.
That's the end, at Planning Commission?
Yes.
Okay.
And for any item requiring a special use permit, it would end with the Planning Commission, whether it has anything to do with this or something else.
Okay, thank you. And I'd also like to thank Andy Van Ols for his very diligent, three-year sojourn working with the city statewide, or citywide zoning. And, and I appreciate his effort and diligence in that, but anyway, that's all I have to say.
Anything to say?
I, I wanna just point out that it's not going from residential. It's going from one kind of business to another kind of business. And for the property itself, the, from what I am, and I'm changing my position, I've told people, you may not be happy with me on this one. But in my, in my education, when I was a planning commissioner initially, and the portion on ethics, the ethics stated that, that when you are making zoning decisions, it needs to be based on the property and what, what the use of that property is, not whether or not the owners have good behavior, bad behavior, whether they are your, your family member, or you wouldn't vote on it if it was your family member, but if they had been helpful or not helpful, you look at the property, and from the slides that we saw, when you drive by, when you look at what's around that, and that it's going from one kind of business to another kind of business. We had, I remember when we had Hermans and above Hermans, there were, there was an inn up above, and there were places to stay. And I had family members coming from California and stayed up in those rooms and loved so much to be able to stay downtown. And then when they came back this summer for my son's wedding, the first question was, is there a place that we could stay downtown? And it was multiple, multiple family members coming from far away that had some deep pockets themselves. And, and there wasn't, so they went and stayed out at, at hotels outside of town. So, looking at the property itself and looking at, at the need for something like this in our community, and, and, and if the DDA a hundred percent supports it, the Planning Commission a hundred percent supports it, these are people that we ask to advise us in policy, and I believe that that should be honored.
Mayor?
Yes.
Perhaps putting the cart in front of the horse, but I wanted to mention as well regarding enforcement, should the rezoning request be ratified this evening? And then should the property owner go back to the Planning Commission and request a special use permit? And then should the Planning Commission grant said special use permit? And then should there be issues with regard to activity occurring at the property that warrants a review of the special use permit? The Planning Commission does have the authority, and they have done so in the past with, with another issue, to review, have a hearing, and then revoke said special use permit. So, I'm just sharing this not only with City Council, but publicly, that there are a number of measures in place, or protections in place, for the situation.
Answers my question, thanks.
And, and also with enforcement, the increasing enforcement and, and, and budgeting to have an enforcement officer has actually eliminated pretty much all, as we are aware of now, of the illegal short-term rentals in the city. I, I shouldn't say all because I'm sure there's some clandestine one out there. We did have chickens back in the nineties. But, but, so enforcement is there. And when you, when you have a, when you do a special use permit, there are very strict specifications for how you do it and what you need to do. And one of the concerns I've heard from people is that these, they don't get fire inspections, they don't, they're not paying taxes on it, they're not paying sales act, et cetera, et cetera. Well, these are all things that you put in a special use permit, and those are the things that have to be followed. And if, as we're looking at, we have zones in the city that do allow short-term rentals, and we need to have very specific rules and regulations for those, for the, for the owners and the managers of those to follow. And this is a, I believe, a good opportunity to get that in place. Anything else?
Nope.
Sandy, can we have a roll call, please?
Need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion. Anybody want to make a motion? I need to look at my packet.
Go ahead, Scott.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance amending the city zoning map regarding one twenty-eight East Pine Street.
Second somewhere?
I'll second.
There you go, Ruth Ann, jump right in.
House member French.
Ruth Ann, yes, yes or no?
Oh, did she say my name?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Ellen Bass.
No.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Angles.
No.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay.
Ready? You got another one?
I know we do.
Few more tonight.
Okay.
All right. This next item, next request, thank you everyone, by the way, for all your time and, and energy with this, is to consider the adoption of an ordinance to amend the zoning code to conditionally rezone property. I see John is making his way up to the front again. John, if you wouldn't mind, forward.
Let's give a second for folks to...
Okay.
Good evening again. John Wallace, Community Development Director. Waiting for the presentation to get up. Okay, with, with this case, we have actually the first conditional rezoning we've done on my watch. So, for ten years, this is the only conditional rezoning that someone has applied for. So, it was kind of unique to, to address this. But it's to conditionally rezone the parcel, which is ten dash one zero six dash zero zero dash zero zero five dash zero three. The property does not have an address at this point in time. To rezone from RM one, which is kind of a multifamily district, to B three, which is a general commercial business district, with the limitation that it can only be used for self-storage. Ordinarily, if this weren't a conditional rezoning, I wouldn't support a B three in this area. But the only use that this property is being applied to be used for is self-storage. And as you can tell by the site, you can see the red box on the slide. It's located behind the Lakeside Apartments, off of Pearl Street, right next, next to the Pheasant Ridge Mobile Home Park. There's a lot of apartments in that area. There's also the Mobile Home Park. I believe the use is being planned to kind of be a support use to all that multifamily because of the small residential units and, and small amount of space you have for storage in the Mobile Home Park. So, kind of looking at it from that, that perspective. The owner is Alba Ventures LLC. The applicant representative is Rob Munger. This property, in addition to being unique for conditional rezoning, it's unique, and then it's one of the few properties that has no access to a public street. It's at the end of a private street behind Lakeside Apartments, for which the applicant has an access easement for, which goes through the Lakeside Apartment Complex. The parcel, which is the subject of the rezoning request, does not have access to a public street. And the distance of this parcel from Pearl Street does not make installing new water and sewer lines financially feasible. The water and sewer lines that run to serve the apartments are not public mains, they are private mains. And so, any lines that were run again to this parcel all the way to the back would have to be run all the way from Pearl Street. The owner is applying to have the property rezoned from RM one, multiple, multiple-family residential to the B three general business district. The rezoning request is a conditional rezoning, which means the applicant can voluntarily, and that's the key word, voluntarily choose to limit the types of uses which will be developed on the site. In this case, the applicant has chosen to limit the use under the B three district, limited to self-storage only. The site would not be able to be used for all of the other uses allowed by the B three district. Owner narrative in support of the request. The property is at the end of a private street. Currently, the apartment complex is serviced by their private water and sewer lines. The length of the lateral for the public sewer and water run from Pearl Street is cost prohibitive for multifamily development. At, at the purchase, time of purchase, Clam Lake Township, was in discussions to loop the public utilities with me giving a public easement. Clam Lake Township abandoned their plans of moving forward. I am seeking the B three zoning and voluntarily conditional rezoning for self, self-storage units. This use does not require public utilities. It will provide the self-storage needed in the area where there is not any readily available units. And then he added, it suggested business hours will be seven to nine P.M. I should mention, too, that this is another case where if this were approved, the applicant would also still have to come back for a special use permit, which might be the more appropriate time to deal with operational or site development issues. As of right now, it's just a simple rezoning, and there is no developed site plan for the site. This will give you some idea of what is adjacent to the site. You have the Lakeside Apartments immediately to the north of the site. That's the back of the most, southernmost building on the property. Then to the west of the site, you have the Pheasant Ridge Mobile Home Park. That's one of the views that I could get of the actual units through the, through the property. And then land to the east and to the south are vacant. So, as far as the camera could see in either direction, there was no adjacent development. If you look at the zoning for the area, the heavier black line on the, on the south or the bottom part of the slide is what we're talking about for the rezoning. You can see the Pheasant Ridge Mobile Home Park is zoned R two. The apartments to the north of the site are RM one. You have another site next to that, RM one. Then you have an RM two next to that. And you also have a tourist service District One located to the east of the site. The city's master plan identifies the subject property to be designated for high-density residential development. This classification is designed to provide for a wide variety of housing possibilities, including single-family, duplex slash two-family, multiple-family units, manufactured home parks, and residential planned unit developments. Already discussed was some of the limitation and the difficulty in trying to do any kind of multiple-family development on the site. Zoning analysis, establishing an optimal zoning district for the subject site is challenging due to it not having direct access to a public street. Conditional rezoning to the B three district with the limitation to self-storage is a reasonable zoning designation. Self-storage could be viewed as a supportive use to the apartment and mobile home residents in the area who have relatively small living quarters. Self-storage facilities also have a relatively low daily trip generation. The applicant, at the applicant's two other storage facilities, the visitation is about five visitors per week, and that, that has forty-eight units. Under this conditional rezoning, if it were approved, the use would also require especially land use permit, which would give the Planning Commission the ability to impose conditions as part of the final, final site plan approval. So, you know, sometimes you have visions of people going, coming going constantly, but that does not seem to be the case, as borne out by two other local self-storage facilities. Again, the rezoning process is a two-step process. It did receive the approval of the Planning Commission, and now is before the City Council for consideration for a conditional rezoning. Some of the rezoning considerations, as I mentioned in the earlier case, is the proposed classification compatible with surrounding land uses and zone district classifications? Is the proposed rezoning consistent with the city master plan? If not, or questionable, does the request represent an appropriate use of the land based on changes and/or other factors that have occurred subsequent to the adoption of the plan? Are the existing public facilities and services capable of accommodating the land uses permitted by the proposed classification? Is the proposed classification equal to or more appropriate than the existing zone district classification? And does the request meet the criteria required by the zoning ordinance for the intended use? The Planning Commission determined at their meeting that these, all these considerations could be answered in the affirmative. The recommendation, the Planning Commission recommends to the City Council that the resolution approving the conditional rezoning of parcel number ten dash one zero six dash zero zero dash zero zero five dash zero three from RM one to B three be approved, such approval would limit the use of this property to self-storage. And again, should it be approved, the applicant would still need to submit for special use permit where site details, screening, lighting, operation of hours, those kinds of things could be addressed. And that's all I have.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah.
Is the other, another aspect of conditional zoning in this case got to do, let's see, they have a limited time window, like eighteen months or something, to start the project? Did I see that somewhere?
Yeah, I'm not sure on that timeframe. I'm not sure if the attorney is aware of that timeframe. I would have to check on that.
It seems like I read that somewhere.
It, it's possible.
Wondered if that was so, as part of the conditional...
We would, we would have to get back unless it's in the ordinance. Let me see while you guys are looking. So, the, on page seven of the ordinance, under rezoning conditions, I see that there's an A and a B. It says how the parcel shall be used, shall only be used for the development and operation of a commercial self-storage facility. B, nothing of this ordinance shall relieve applicant from any obligation to apply for and receive special approval of a special use permit or site plan required by the city zoning ordinance. There might be a timeframe, but it's not, it's not popping up.
All right, I saw in something I wrote.
Okay.
That was my question, thanks.
And the, the owner is here and can provide additional details following my presentation, or...
Sorry, I did find it. Page nine, number fourteen, time period for establishing development or use. The approved development and/or use of the property authorized by this agreement must commence within eighteen months after the conditional rezoning takes effect and thereafter proceed diligently to completion upon written request. This time may be extended by the City Council if one, it has demonstrated to the City Council's reasonable satisfaction that there is a strong likelihood that the development and/or use will commence within the period of extension and proceed diligently thereafter to completion. And two, the City Council finds that there has not been a change in circumstances that would render the current zoning with the agreement incompatible with other zones and uses in the surrounding area or otherwise inconsistent with zoning policy. So, you're right, eighteen months.
Eighteen months, all right. I just...
But you gotta get through this.
Good catch.
Yeah, oh, sure, sure. No, I just, if, 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 if for some reason the developer couldn't get his project going, there's this window of time that it could revert back to the previous zoning. I just want to clarify that. Thank you.
Any more questions for me before I see if the owner wants to make any statements? Okay.
Good evening, I'm Rob Munger. Um, I hope you guys know me. Uh, really looked at this piece of property. The intent was to loop it with Clam Lake, um, sewer and water. And they don't have it. They, it would've come through the city and then they were gonna extend it, and there's an agreement in place, so that all made sense. Um, nothing on the city's part delayed. Unfortunately, the, the Clam Lake Township didn't follow through on some things. And I had an option to purchase that, uh, seventy acres from, I believe it's Pat McGuire. I, um, I've worked with Mike McGuire's son. And, um, so anyway, um, looked at bringing sewer and water just to that site. And with that, um, I'd have to cut the trees down and the easement, and then pretty much hog, uh, excavators through their deep, deep trenches from Pearl Street all the way back to the property. Um, looking at the surrounding neighborhood, I didn't think that was probably appropriate. Um, the road's a private road. I'm the parent, um, uh, property, so I, I'm the one that issues the easement for all those apartments to utilize that, that property. So it's not the other way around. So, and that was submitted to the city, so they have that. Um, so I have all the rights to, um, develop that property. I could put about sixty-five apartments there. I didn't think that was a, a really good use for it. Probably a good use because we need housing, probably not appropriate use because the amount of traffic going down that street and the increase, I didn't think it, that was a good option. So the other option was self-storage. I own two self-storage facilities locally. Um, and we typically will get people that will rent and they may not be back for three, four months. So it's a low-use, low-impact. And so that's why I chose, um, to come to, to utilize the property in this manner. Any questions?
I've got one on the easement. So you're the easement holder?
Yes, I am the parent property. So there's a parent property that, uh, gives the easement. And I'm the parent property.
So the easement we're discussing is the driveway that goes into the, um, uh, apartments that has three speed bumps on it?
Correct.
Okay.
I didn't install the road. The own, they just gave the easement and then they, the apartment building improved that.
So how long have you owned this property?
I think three years. I don't even know.
Okay, so.
I own a lot of property.
That, that three acres held the easement even before, um?
Yeah, back like nineteen seventies.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's been there a long time.
I see. All right, I didn't, I figured it was the other way around.
Well, the apartment owner thought was the other way around. He's an attorney that owns a, it's a venture group. It's, uh, many investors. And he says, well, you can't use it. And, um, actually, um, the title company sent it over and said, no. Rob gave, that property is giving you the easement. It's not the other way around. And he looked at it, and he didn't have it on his file. Uh, and said, oh, okay, well, I guess I'm mistaken.
Cause that was gonna be my question. Had, had you discussed it with the, um, apartments and what they thought of the shared use of that, um, driveway, that private driveway?
Yep. Yeah, they really don't have anything to say.
I see. Okay.
So, he says, we improved it, you can use it. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, I will open up public comments as part of this public hearing.
Hi, I'm Mary Lou Shadley. Um, I'm a resident of Pheasant Ridge. In fact, I sho- I showed up on the map there. Um, after the planning meeting where the zoning was changed, I went around and, um, talked to many of the people that live on Partridge Lane and Fairway Drive, which is right next to the end of, uh, Pheasant Ridge property, then the easement, and then, um, the Lakeside Apartments. And, um, I know Mr. Wallace has already, um, mentioned some of these things, and so has Mr. Munger. But just so I get across to the people, my, my neighbors that I talked to, a lot of their concerns are the noise concerns from the new road and building construction to go back and forth, um, on that easement road back to the site. Um, the noise from people moving in and out of the storage units. The noise from the metal doors banging on the storage unit doors being opened and closed day and night. Um, and the people in and out of the area. Their lighting concerns were twenty-four hours light in usually a very unlit residential area. Constant illumination in that area that was dark and quiet. And wondering if there would be motion lights that would be coming on and off in the evening because we have wildlife in that area. Um, in fact, just a couple of weeks ago, I saw two what I thought were small coyotes coming across. They turned out to be two thirty-five pound raccoons. Um, we have possums, we have skunks, we have rabbits, we have deer, and we occasionally have a coyote that comes in that area. Um, they were concerned about the projected hours, um, between seven AM and nine PM and it being accessible seven days a week and more traffic also in that area. Um, their traffic concerns were Pearl Street is already a very, very business, uh, business street. People use, take Mitchell Street over to get on one fifteen. Pearl Street's used by the state police. It's used by the regular police. It's a very, very busy, um, uh, busy street for, um, it needing some attention lately because of the holes in it. Um, the apartment has a lot of children, and they are waiting for the school bus mornings and afternoons with parents lined up along that easement pathway. Um, concerned, considered, and there's a play area out there as well. Um, and they're concerned about the, um, storage units that will be available in the evenings and the weekends. The security concerns are that people will be in and out of there at all different times. Um, and that it will encour- encourage more people back there for break-ins and vandalisms. That seems to be more of a concern of the older people. Uh, Pheasant Ridge a few years ago did have some vandalisms in the storage units that we all have on our properties that we pay property tax on. So each unit in there has their own storage unit, um, in Pheasant Ridge. Um, the other concern which I, I believe Mr. Wallace said that how many more units would, will be built to the east? Or how, how many could be built to the east? Um, and they were concerned about the way the property would be looked, if it would be fenced in, if there would be trees around it. Because that's an area that has trees in it, it's kind of secluded. Um, and they are also concerned about the garbage and the refuse removal, um, done in a timely manner because we all know that in storage units, people move out and just leave stuff and then it gets put in a, um, garbage disposal. Never, you know, and may sit there for a while because we have the wildlife that we do. Um, and there was question about will there be outside storage? I know that Pheasant Ridge to the west of their property has an area where people can put RVs and boats and that kind of stuff. And would that, um, would that be available on the, um, storage unit property, which I think they just said no? Um, and like I said, we at Pheasant Ridge, um, all have our own storage unit in the back of our homes that we pay property tax on. One of the biggest things that, um, I found out, and I'm not an engineer or anything, but manufactured homes are set up with a pier foundation, which are blocks. And the use of heavy equipment with the vibration on the ground could possibly destabilize our homes. And there was a concern, I, I was surprised at how many people, I mean, I've been there since twenty eighteen and I had no idea, but how many people of my neighbors were, um, that knew about this and who would be, um, liable because a lot of us are definitely on, um, fixed incomes. So, um, I did make copies of these concerned. Um, I did take it to the city manager's office on April first. I thought you folks would get something in your agenda packages, and apparently you didn't. So I have a couple here. Madam Mayor, if I could give to you that you could have them look at. So those were the concerns.
Email to you guys?
Yes.
Those were the concerns of our residents.
We did receive it.
Oh, you did?
So I thank you for your time and consideration. I'm sure the, my, my, my new people that I met, I met so many of my new neighbors just going down the street, which was a, a lot of fun and appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I need to make a copy of this for the public record.
Okay. Okay. Seeing no one else, shoot it to council.
Mayor.
Or Marcus.
Uh, just wanted to mention, um, that one of the benefits of, of this use being required, as you'll see in the ordinance itself, um, that it's conditional, is that it has to go back to the planning commission should the zoning be approved this evening. Still has to go back to the planning commission for a special use permit. It is common that conditions be part of the consideration and potential granting of any special use permit. So the same, uh, information that was handed to you this evening that I previously emailed to the full council when it originally came in, um, would be the same information that would also be shared with, um, our development department, shared with the planning commission, and then ultimately up to the planning commission as to whether or not any of these conditions would, would need to be a part of the actual, uh, permit itself. So that was my two cents, just to add.
We've, we've done this before with the planning commission having, um, citizen input and then having those restrictions placed on a property based on, um, people's asks, I believe, multiple times. Yeah?
Uh, one of my concerns about this, uh, zoning change is it's really a residential area. It's very private and, and, um, I've been down in, on the apartment parking lot. It's, um, you know, they're low-income apartments. There's, there are families with a lot of children. Um, there is a, along the driveway going in, a, um, playground for kids. And those kids, uh, like Mary Lou mentioned, they're out at the bus stop. They're all over that parking lot. That's their play area there. Um, so my concern would be for safety to, uh, of, uh, families living there, uh, bringing in, um, you know, a business right through and into their living, you know, kind of their, uh, living and, and, um, play areas. Uh, and you've already heard the concerns from Pheasant Ridge, which I've heard from other people that live at Pheasant Ridge, similar, uh, concerns. So.
Nothing here. Ready for a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to conditionally rezoned property.
Support.
Councilmember Allen Bass?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
No.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay.
Okay.
Couple more.
Next.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the city council. Uh, next two items, um, are related. Uh, I'm going to kick this to our finance director, Owen Roberts, who has been patiently waiting somewhere. Owen? Oh, there you are. Good to go.
Thank you. Well, I guess, uh, I can't control the timing, so I do apologize that these are falling on the same night as a, as a lengthy meeting. I will try to be brief, um, but I do feel like with the, uh, the importance of the topic, it does kind of warrant some, uh, the time that it deserves. So, um, we'll try to, to find a good balance of both of those. Uh, this first public hearing is related to the capital improvement program. This is a six-year program uh, that we deal, uh, with each year as part of, early part of the budget process. And so that's what we're here to talk about tonight. Um, this process is not officially required by our own charter or ordinances or anything like that. Um, it is, uh, for the purpose of, of multi-year planning, coordinating of projects. Uh, when you tear up a street, you want to make sure you do the, the water and sewer lines underneath as appropriate. And again, it's for public input and communication to the public. So, uh, you know, many of the ideas that have ended up coming in as, you know, recreation or, or those types of projects came from citizen groups that came to us and said, what, you know, what do you think about this? And, um, so we do take that into consideration as well. Um, there is a, a part of the Planning Act, uh, that does require a, a capital improvement program for, um, public structures and improvements. So, uh, in that aspect, um, this, this probably is a required document. Uh, but council just approves this program, approves the concepts, approves the, um, you know, the schedule of plans and things like that. Uh, we don't appropriate any funds as part of this process. So, action taken on this document does not commit us to these projects, but it, it simply approves them, uh, in concept. And this is done, uh, again, each year as an early part of the budget process. How do we define a capital project? Um, we define an, uh, this as an, an asset or project that costs in excess of seventy-five hundred dollars and with a useful life of more than one year. So these are things would end up kind of flowing into our depreciation schedules. Again, these projects are defined, identified, uh, departmental requests and their needs as they evaluate their own, uh, equipment and operations. City council priorities, the things that, uh, that come from, uh, the governing, uh, body here. Community needs and citizen, uh, input, grants and potential grant applications. And this can, can be in two forms really, and you'll see both of those as part of the current document. Um, grants that we, uh, know that are out there that we would apply for and, and have the project in there, in, in this document, um, in anticipation that we may receive that grant in the upcoming years. And a couple that are in there, uh, as part of, um, that came from potential grant applications and, and even the recreation plan. And those, when you, when they see it in a recreation plan and then it flows into a capital improvement document, you, you can score higher on, on those grant applications when they see that it's actually been discussed and talked about and planned. So, uh, those types of projects fall into, or, or, um, end up in this document as well. So the current document identifies thirty million dollars, almost thirty-one million dollars of projects. And you can see the type of projects that are included from buildings, uh, technology, small equipment, heavy equipment like plow trucks and fire trucks and things like that. Um, projects in the cemetery and recreation projects, parks, playgrounds, things like that. And there are a couple of those, both planned and conceptual at this point. Uh, vehicles, so the plan and, uh, replaces seventeen vehicles in the next, uh, six years. Streets and sidewalks, uh, an important one, utilities, infrastructure and, and other infrastructures as well. Primarily on that one, it's a big number, um, is a kind of a conceptual project related to, uh, redevelopment of some of the downtown space. Um, specifically the, the Mitchell Street corridor. One of the important questions, uh, each year is what streets are part of the, the current document. Um, on the major street side for year one, that's in the proposed budget that we'll talk about next. Um, there are no major projects in there, but it does include a small amount of money for, uh, some resurfacing. On the local street side, Aldrich Street, Bond to Linden is one of our worst streets and also needs some utilities infrastructure underneath it. Uh, the street portion of that will be about four hundred and twelve thousand five hundred. And again, this budget also. And again, this budget also includes a small amount of dollars for some resurfacing and then some engineering and design costs for future projects. Year two to six does include 2.7 million for 11 additional road reconstruction projects. Those are all very much needed. I will tell you there, this schedule will be in a state of flux over the next months. We talked about that in the work session. We're working with the engineer to have a, kind of a light version of an asset management plan specifically related to roads in place over the next, you know, probably six months or so prior to this process coming in next year. What this will do is help drive an increased analysis of road improvements and with the explicit goal to identify a multi-year schedule, kind of with a multi-option approach to systematic improvement of our local road condition. So it's pothole season, so that gets some extra attention. And these days, our guys are out every single day. If you have a bad one, we welcome your calls or online reports and we'll get to taking care of those as quick as we can. Another one of our most critical investments is in the utilities, infrastructure. So seven projects in this document related to under-the-street infrastructure projects at a cost of just under $1 million. So this would be the project coordination while the streets are torn up. Some sewer lining projects where the pipe doesn't necessarily need to be replaced, but you can protect it and prolong the life of it by doing some lining. It's not cheap, but it's a whole lot cheaper than digging it up and completely replacing it. And then a major project, what we've called the Headworks Project. So this project really addresses a number of things. When the inflow initially comes into the plant and then gets in there and just some major upgrades to some of that really important equipment, structures and infrastructure out at the plant. What is also going to roll into here is some building improvements. Those buildings are very, are quite old out there. They're very well taken care of, but they need some upgrades. And so we'll take care of that as well as part of this project. This will require some additional debt financing. We have a debt issue coming off and I think we have two more payments on it. And so that will free up some debt capacity to help some of the long-term financing on that. And we talked about that again as part of our rate meeting as well. Public safety, another area of important investment that we make each year. Again, we've talked about this one a number of times. We're kind of tapering it into final approach to actually have to make a decision and buy this thing. Our current one with an estimated life of, you know, 15 to 20 years is now 30 years old. And again, I think part of that is, you know, we don't have a ton of buildings that need a ladder truck. It has been used on a number of occasions and you always need to have one of those available. But the guys also maintain these things really, really well, wash frequently when maintenance is needed, maintenance is done. So I think it's a credit to the department for how well they take care of the equipment as they protect those assets as well. That's going to be a big purchase. And so we have some reserves that we keep kind of earmarking for that purchase. And I would imagine as we talk about, not this year's budget, but over the next couple, that will be a part of those discussions as well. There's another engine over there as well that will reach, probably just past its useful life as we try to replace that as well. Police vehicles, we try to keep a regular schedule of those. Those are obviously pretty critical pieces of public safety equipment the guys are in. We need to keep them safe and we try to do that best we can through investing in new vehicles. Here's a couple of the projects that flow in there, both from a kind of a conceptual side and a long-term plan kind of side. Diggins Hill improvements. We have a playground that should be installed here within the next couple of months and that will be an exciting project up there. We got private contributions for the most significant portion of that project, which was exciting. But there's also a master plan for that site up there in the whole Diggins Hill area that includes things like, you know, improved tennis and pickleball and improvements to the disc golf and things like that. There's also an application that we've currently filed that we talked about a few weeks ago for this sensory playground. Again, that will require the outside funding to be received, but we did pledge a match to that one as well. The city dock and grounds area, it really is time. We do have a plan to probably use a diver to go in and analyze the under, under the water portion of that structure as we try to use that then as the base to what we need to do there first in terms of getting some, either major repairs or complete replacement to that downtown dock. And so that's in there as well. And again, all of these projects can be in here too to help. Just affirm as we apply for various grants that we are talking about these and planning for these things and there is governing body support at least, conceptually for these plans. Kenwood Park as well, there's land out there that we can do some exciting things there as funds could be sought and secured and identified. The Mitchell Street corridor, that's the one that I spoke about earlier. That's a major part of that other infrastructure category. So this, this number, we know it's going to be big. It could be more, it could be less, not exactly for sure. But just wanted to get a placeholder in there as we start these, to move these discussions forward. Look for outside funding, establish conversations and communication with the partners that will be required as part of that project. And then a couple of neighborhood parks as well. I think part of having some of that in there, you know, we are building a couple of the microparks. The one over there on the White Pine Trail is almost done. I think the wall's got to be painted yet and that'll be, that'll be a kind of a neat thing. And then the one over here on Haynes Street, if you haven't seen that one yet, they've made a lot of progress on that as well. And I think that's a, that's a pretty neat project. Forgot to flip the slides. So there, those are that I was just talking about. So that really is what I wanted to review. Again, this document has been available for some time on our website. It's pretty simple, cadillac-mi.net/cip. Not required as part of our governing documents, but very prudent from a financial planning process and a planning commission process as well. We are requesting council approve the program. And again, just to reiterate, it approves the program as a plan, but it does not appropriate any funds. So with that, I'm going to sit in case there's public comments and then I'll see you in a few minutes.
While our finance director goes and sits, I just want to remind city council that similar to the annual operating budget of the city, this too is sort of a living document. What do I mean when I say that? Well, it's subject to change. If there are priorities that come out that aren't even, you know, on our things-to-do list today that we need to address, then whether or not it's in the six-year plan or not, we'll certainly bring them to city council. Likewise, if there's funding that becomes available that isn't available today, whether it's from an inside source or an outside source and it's for an item that is not yet on the list, we'll certainly advise if, of course, something has evolved to that point and have the opportunity to go forward with consideration of whatever that, whatever that project might be. So this is, you know, it's a six-year document. Every year we refresh it. Every year we verify where the priorities are. It's a public process throughout the entirety. Tonight was an optional hearing that we had, but we had it just as another option to have. And now it's time for folks to comment.
Comment.
Yep.
Anyone has a comment about the capital improvement program? Yes, of course.
Again, Brad Marine, you said it's a living document. So do you just arbitrarily decide what changes happen in a living document? When does the public have input into this living document and when these priorities are changed? Does it just change because Marcus says change them? Where's the input? You talked about a public process. It took me a bit. In fact, I had to ask Owen where to find the CIP. I haven't seen anything published other than what Owen finally led me to the right spot. But what was this public process? Were there public hearings? Was there surveys? Did you go out? Did you have community events where you asked people to come and give input into this public process? Or is this just some word salad that the city manager's using? Because I'm not aware of any. Correct me if I'm wrong. But it's kind of scary when you've got a city manager who obviously doesn't care about process because he avoided bylaws for 15 years, statutory requirements that whole time. Now he wants to sit up here and say, well, yeah, this is a living document. Just want to make sure that you understand that. And as a community, we're supposed to trust his judgment? The same person who kept things from you for years? Same person who kept those things from you that have resulted in people getting sick? And you want us to sit back and say, yeah, we trust him. It's a living document. I'm sure he's going to make a good decision. So he talks about all these great things, but I don't see any action. So again, if there's a public process that's been going on in the city where you've had people coming in, where you've had events, where you sat down like coffee with the mayor to develop the CIP? Show us. Should be simple, right? Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I'm going to close public comments. And remind everybody that we had a, when we were first, when the CIP was first introduced, we had a work session and we had several members of the community attend that work session. And we received correspondence after that work session about how wonderful it was to be part of that conversation in developing the CIP and how they learned so much about it. And this was a posted, open work session that everyone was invited in and some of you who are here tonight were there. So I just wanted to say that. Anyone else have anything else?
Well, I wasn't going to say anything. Mr. Marine, I may have a couple of answers for you. I was the foreman at Maple Hill Cemetery for 13 years. I was a part of the CIP. You asked where the input came from? From Maple Hill Cemetery, it came from me. Five years out, pick five things each year to upgrade the cemetery. Now, the superintendents have a hand in it, street department, water department. Just, you know, that's, far as I know, that's where it comes from. It came.
No, it's your turn to talk.
I'll talk to you afterwards if you'd like to. And that to me is very simple. I had a different name for it. We call it a wish catalog. You call it a living document because it changes. And just because it's there, doesn't mean you're going to get it. What kind of upgrades do you want? Put it on here and we'll see if we have the money for it. But if you have any other questions afterwards, I'd be glad to talk to you. Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think I've talked to maybe before, you know, Scott and Ruth Ann too. And I remember when I first got on, or when Brian first got on, having conversations with them, hauling in the CIP and the budget and saying, we do this once a year. You'll have a meeting on the CIP, you have a meeting on the budget. And this is how, if you wanted to build a park, this is where you would introduce that conversation. If you wanted to hire a detective for the police department, because we were without one, this is where you'd put, you'd put that into a capital improvement program to start budgeting for it. Did we put in the CIP or was that a separate goal setting when we wanted to hire the zoning, the zoning enforcement officer? Was that in the CIP or the year before we actually acted that?
Not the CIP. It was a part of the city council goals and priority programs.
No, when we hired the detective, that was actually a part of the CIP because we'd been working on that funding for several years.
It may have been, but I know that that too was also a part of the priority programs and goals and strategies of the city council.
So I mean, as I've been here, I've seen, you know, I've been a part of seven years worth of CIPs. I've seen some things that are still on there. I've seen some things get accomplished ahead of times, ahead of time. I've seen things appear and things disappear. We have a section of the CIP, right, where we keep the completed items?
You're thinking again of the priority programs?
Okay.
The city council, it's under our goals and objectives. And then there's a, forgive the number, I think it's around 20 different goals and objectives where we have that and we have a section that's been archived, those that we've pulled off and some that are still ongoing.
Yeah, I think I mixed those up because I view those a lot, specifically the priority programs and the CIP as kind of sister documents when I look at what we're planning to do, what we're trying to do and what we're in the middle of. Maybe the CIP is what we're planning to do. The programs and priorities of what we're in the middle of and what we're, where we are on those things. So, but the budgeting process and the CIP process and the special meetings that we invite the public to attend, we hold them in the conference room. They are before council meetings. We hold them in the conference room to facilitate conversation. Mr. Van Alss is one of the people that joined us. There were several others. And, you know, I think that's one of the most important parts of the city council and the city that a lot of people miss. The meat, a lot of the meat and potatoes and the explanations and the planning happens there. So, you know, to Brad's point, in the seven years I've been here, a lot of people are not aware how important that is, how that occurs and that process exists. But it does, it is open. I've always found it to be very positive. And I think the CIP and having a seven-year CIP is a fantastic thing that we do.
If I may add, just for, just for a little context, we, you know, have had quite a lot of success in receiving outside funding to help us create the Cadillac Commons area. The first, you know, phase of that arguably was the Plaza. And that did not exist in the CIP. I mean, that was something that came out of nowhere after the city was successful in getting a technical services grant to build a plan. And then funding to get it started. We ultimately added it into our budgeting documents and whatnot. But that, that happens to be something that I think a lot of people can relate to as a success story for Cadillac, yet it was not envisioned within the document. Back then, before we were redevelopment-ready certified, the CIP was only a five-year document. Now that we're certified, it's a six-year document. And we're trying to do better in essentially looking into a crystal ball, thinking about different areas that could benefit by, you know, by putting together essentially as, as councilmember Allen Bass said, you know, a wish list. So.
Thank you. Anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026, 2031 capital improvement program as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. Owen?
Okay, last one. This one may take a few extra minutes, but this is, this is kind of where we actually get into appropriating some funds. So not tonight, but eventually as part of this plan. So this is the budget public hearing that is required by the city charter. Section 10.2 requires us to have this on or before, oh, the budget to council on or before the first day of April in each year. So that was delivered to you in a timely fashion. A public hearing in the second half of the month of April. So that's what we're here to do tonight. The next step will be we introduce the budget, the General Appropriations Act as an ordinance. We'll do that, plan to do that on the 4th of May. That's required then to adopt that ordinance on May 19th, according to the charter, which says not before the 10th day of May nor later than the last day in May each year. This is a document that the budget can be amended. It can only be amended by city council as part of a resolution that they make. And so that can, that's where that can kind of ebb and flow throughout the year depending on certain things that may happen that were unexpected or unplanned. So that can happen throughout the year. As part of the 26, and just incidentally, we talked about fiscal year and year. So our fiscal year, obviously, as you guys know, runs July 1 to June 30. I'm not going to say fiscal year every time I say the year. I'm just going to say 2026, but please understand that that will mean the fiscal year. So total revenue for 2026 will be 24.3 million. Total spending that is proposed is about 25.6 million. And we plan to use about 1.3. And we plan to use about one point three million dollars in reserves to fund all of the projects for the year. Again, want to reiterate, the general fund does have structural balance, which I think is very important. That structural balance is a little bit less than it was last year, but we still have achieved that and that is something that we're taking very seriously. The use of reserves on hand is for one-time spending related to capital purchases. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through the presentation. The budget targets several important priorities, both for council and for the community. Protection of reserves, the general fund especially, which is our main operating fund, will stay well in excess of required policy and best practice requirements. And so we will maintain that. Takes care of the people that work here between, depending on bargaining units and CBAs between a three and four percent COLA. Authorized staffing is up one person, and that's the position in the downtown, the DDA, that we talked about as part of the work session that will be funded by the DDA and a small amount of outside funding as well for that. Makes important investments in public safety. The operations for police and fire are about four point seven million dollars in the general fund. And it does take clean water and effective and efficient wastewater treatment very seriously as we have an operating budget of five point four million dollars in there, plus some capital projects as well. Once again, the general fund is the main operating fund of the city. So this fund accounts for everything that wouldn't be required to be accounted for elsewhere. So this is where things like the property taxes are deposited. This is the place where you'll find the typical activities that are associated and attributed to a local unit of government like ours. So public safety, elections, parks and rec, administrative services like elections and taking care of the municipal complex, all of those flow into the general fund. General fund specifically has just under nine point two million dollars in expected revenues. And that taxes will provide, property taxes will provide about fifty-six percent of that. And proposed expenditures of nine point seven million, with public safety representing about forty-nine percent of general fund expenditures. Once again, we plan to use about five hundred sixty-six thousand dollars in reserves, primarily to fund the Eldred Street project, transferring four hundred thousand to the local street fund to complete that project. So the main revenue source in the general fund is related to property taxes. So this just gives you a little illustration of what's happened with our tax base since its prior peak in two thousand nine. So you can see after two thousand nine, we went through almost a decade of mostly reductions in our tax base and our taxable value on which our property tax revenues are calculated. A little bit of anomaly around two thousand sixteen is when the personal property tax changes were made. And so that revenue started coming from, a portion of that loss started coming from the state. But overall, you can see those first ten years or so of this chart shows, can really, I think, illustrate a challenge that we've had in terms of our revenue growth. But then we've had a few good years and then a little bit of a dip, not in reduction of value, but a smaller growth for the current year of about three point one percent in taxable value and almost six percent in assessed value. So values are still growing, albeit at a slower pace. One of the problems is the Headley Amendment. So again, understand that the formulas related to Proposal A and the Headley Amendment were certainly designed to restrict increases in property taxes on behalf of property owners. So certainly understood, respected, expected from that aspect. But these formulas are not perfect, in my opinion. And especially as it relates to the uncapping process, which the real estate people in the room, you know, can certainly understand. But there could be a change to that, I think, that would keep it equitable for both local taxing jurisdictions and long-term property owners. But for us, you can see since two thousand seventeen, our millage has been reduced because of this amendment five times. So we have no control over this. And this can only be overridden by a vote of the people of the city. So overall, we've lost about point six mils, which calculates to about a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars for just this year only. And our DDA millage has been, has suffered the same rollbacks as well. In terms of revenue, when you put the taxable value and apply the millages to it, here are our millage rates. I have not heard of a Headley rollback for the year. And so I'm not expecting that, especially when the initial tax rule was at three point one percent. I think we'll be okay. But here's what the revenue then looks like. Between the operating and the police and fire, millage will generate just over five million dollars in property taxes. A portion of those taxes are captured by some authorities that we have in town to the tune of about two hundred and forty thousand. So those funds flow into those authorities to be spent according to those tax increment financing plans. And this is how the mechanism works on that and the results of those TIF plans. Overall, the revenue is about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars more than the prior year. Revenue from the state of Michigan is also a fairly significant source of revenue. The state shared revenue flows into the general fund. These funds are only expected to grow, you know, under two percent, as you can see. So about one million one hundred and twenty thousand from the constitutional portion, two hundred and fifty-five thousand that's subject to the state's statutory budget process as well. And so only growing by two percent. Again, that does not keep pace with inflation. And then we have the Act fifty-one dollars. So these are allocated to both a major street fund with twenty-two miles of major roads and the local street fund with forty-two miles of major road. So one point two million to the major street fund, four hundred and forty-five thousand to the local street fund. And just for a point of reference, when we start talking about street costs, seventy-eight percent of our Act fifty-one dollars are spent on labor, supplies and equipment rentals. So, you know, most of it is taken up just to do snow maintenance, put salt down, buy plows, things like that. And so it really leaves a limited source of funds for actual street construction, which is the challenge that we're facing now. We haven't, and I said this before in the work session, we've not done nothing. And so I think that's a good thing. Over the last eleven years, we've spent eight and a half million dollars in road construction. And three and a half of that, we had a two thousand sixteen bond issue and a two thousand twenty bond issue that financed five million of that. But three and a half million, or forty-one percent of that, has been funded with cash and reserves on hand. So I think that's a good number to keep in mind. That's several hundred thousand dollars a year in total that we've been able to fund that construction. This is going to be talked about here in a minute as far as when we get to the challenges part. But it's a problem and needs some very cautious analysis. Our other major fund in the city is the Water and Sewer Fund. This is what's called an enterprise fund and really is used to ensure that water and sewer user charges adequately cover the costs of providing the services. So we've presented this information for a long, long time. This is based on a two thousand twenty-one Gosling Zubik Engineering Services Rate Survey. Again, they used to do this every three years. We've provided the data now two years in a row. And are waiting with bated breath, I think, for the next study. And I think we'll continue to compare favorably. At the time of the study, out of forty-seven systems that responded on the water side and forty-eight on the sewer, and these are in the eastern UP and northern lower peninsula, Cadillac was the sixth lowest in terms of average water bill and eleventh lowest in terms of average sewer bill. And again, this would be for a residential type user. I put the numbers to the, for our last five years, to this, to these numbers. If you only applied what we've done with rates for the last five years, we'd still be eleventh lowest in water and nineteenth for sewer. But that would be assuming nobody else did a thing, which I don't expect to be the case when we see the new rate survey. So we'll be sure and get that out as soon as we see that. But I don't have any timetable for that to come in. In the last fifteen years, here's what rate changes have looked like. So you can kind of see it's a little bit of an up and down. For out of the six years there, in the twenty-teens, I guess, were a zero percent. And then we started prepping for our new well field with some higher adjustments and some catch-up. Rate recommendations were not adopted a year ago, so that's another zero. And then we did go through a pretty comprehensive, again, update to our professional outside rate study. And these are the recommendations that were made to systematically build the funds to a point where we can maintain our investments in the infrastructure. So this year, several projects were not undertaken and purchases not made because of no rate increases. You know, we talk in terms of a six-year CIP, a six-year rate study, and from someone who works with a number of systems. And this is the recommendation that flows out of that. So this is not just numbers that we just pick from the air or do not try to analyze closely with data to back those up. The average for the fifteen years, if you average those out, about three point two percent for water, two point seven percent for sewer, one slightly above, probably the fifteen-year CPI average, one slightly below. If, pass, and that would include the twenty twenty-six recommendation. If pass, the average residential customer would see an increase of about three dollars and sixty-seven cents on a monthly bill, which is forty-four dollars annually. So if fully recommended on the five-year plan, the twenty-year average rates then, if we look at the chart, would be three point four seven and three point eight two percent. So, you know, still pretty in line with an average consumer price index, inflation index, while the cost of equipment, construction, chemicals, et cetera, really have increased at a pace higher than the consumer price index. And that's not just an opinion, you know, just two anecdotes for that. We buy a chemical called ferroc for the wastewater plant. In two thousand seventeen up to twenty twenty-one, we were paying twenty-four and a half cents. I think it's a dry ton is the measurement on that one. We are currently paying sixty-one point two cents. Sorry, point, yeah, I think that's sixty-one cents per dry ton is what that is. So a dry pound, sorry. So even in the last two years, there's been a sixty-three percent just in that. So, I mean, that's a fifty thousand dollar expenditure that's now about seventy. So the other one is we just took bids on wheel loaders, bought the same one in twenty twenty for a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And the latest bid was two fifty-one, which is a forty-nine percent increase. So, you know, about ten percent per year, the costs of those things are going up. So again, I don't want that to come across as just an opinion, just to share those anecdotes of what we've really faced. Just some other highlights. The general fund has continued to absorb the full cost, ninety-one thousand dollars this year of parking lot maintenance and full cost of lake treatment, which is proposed to be sixty-five K for twenty twenty-six. We are planning, since the lofts phase two is underway, streets, sidewalks and parking improvements in conjunction with that. And we do have funds still on hand remaining from phase one. We do still have several public safety, local, inter-local contracts with MMR. CAPS has, we've partnered with them to add a second SRO as of about a year ago, a little bit more. And then the Clam Lake Township Fire Protection. Solid waste and recycling, there are indexes built into those contracts. Those will go up about forty cents per month total. It was mentioned briefly in a public comment. We did have some discussion about this. The CCTV, the channels on Spectrum, they, because we have to relocate those here and they have to be high-def at this point, that is going to come, if we choose to do it, at a cost of three thousand dollars for the construction. And then unfortunately, we're going to have to pay for a service line for data on that to be able to get that data to charter. And that's about eight thousand dollars per year. So I would be happy to hear from people on that. My contact information is in this presentation in a minute. I will call the person that made the public comment myself. Just reach out and just get some additional information and stories on other people that may be, you know, really wanting that service to be restored. So we can talk about that.
Does Spectrum have the number of users in the city limits? Is that impossible to get? It's not?
The total users in city limits or the total ones that watch that program? I mean, I think we can get the total subscriptions. Yeah, yep, because it's part of our franchise. But certainly not any type of utilization. So, yep, I can provide that.
And it is available right now off the internet and live.
So here's what I've identified kind of as three big challenges as we kind of move forward into the upcoming years. We really are in a challenging environment where cost increases are outpacing revenue increases. So we need to really continue some prudent and consistent evaluation of our overall cost structure. And then make sure consistent, ongoing annual expenditures are funded by ongoing revenues. Because if they're not, then you're in that unbalanced situation and trouble will soon follow. So we're going to work hard to maintain, improve our structural balance, especially in our primary funds. Road funding, again, we've talked kind of at length about the challenges related to that. We get one point six million dollars in total annual funding from the state through Act fifty-one. It's primarily gas taxes, vehicle registration fees. That calculates to twenty-six thousand dollars per mile. And which, incidentally, you know, again, seventy-eight percent right off the top of that is for operations. Our last projects have come in, you know, in the three hundred and forty to three hundred and seventy dollars a foot for reconstruction, which calculates out to kind of a staggering one point six million dollars per mile for road reconstruction. So this is going to take some planning and creativity, certainly. There are discussions in the state on fixing the roads. And I wish we could say it a little less, but I won't get into that. But we do need help with road funding. And if something close to what has been proposed would by chance pass, it would create a pretty dramatic set of funds for the city. And because we've already got operations covered, all those dollars could be invested in some major improvements to our roads. Again, we are working on a road asset management plan. I do anticipate this becoming a really important and vital tool to really maintain and begin to improve then the condition of our roads. And finally, water and sewer infrastructure investments. Construction costs have definitely outpaced, you know, anecdotally with those other things, I would think construction costs are at least that from our experience. So we need to make sure that we're thinking long-term on that as part of where the CIP comes into play and also part of where a professional rate consultant comes into play as well, as he sees a number of different systems and can give us any tips and tools that he's seen work in other places. That's finally it. Apologize, that took a little bit longer, but I think the importance of it warrants it. Again, typically, we have five public meetings as part of the budget process. We did add a sixth meeting this year with our water and sewer rate open house that was held last Wednesday. So we have the goals and capital work session as part of the budget process on March seventeenth. We have the budget work session on April seventh. Those are both advertised public meetings. The water and sewer open house on the sixteenth. We're here for the public hearing tonight. And on the fifth of May, we'll introduce the general appropriations ordinance and consider that for adoption on the nineteenth. So that's coming up. In the meantime, the budget is available both in hard copy here at the office as required. And it's also available online at that URL right there, just forward slash F Y twenty- And it's also available online at that URL right there, just forward slash FY 2026 budget. And anyone can feel free to, always happy to ask question or answer questions. I don't get a lot of them, but you know, if people want to set up a time to come in, shoot me an email, give me a phone call. Always willing to talk through any of this. And anything that would come up that would be required to be changed prior to the adoption, we can incorporate that into the general appropriations ordinance. And those can come through council, recommendations or however those can, can flow through. But again, that will be considered for adoption on May nineteenth and then the budget would take effect July one. So. That's it. Again, I'll sit down for a public comment and, you know, I'm happy to come back up if we want to have some additional discussion about anything.
Thanks, Ellen. Okay, I'll open this part of the hearing to public comments.
Good evening, Stephen King, six oh four Holly Road. I think it's important as part of the budget project, we always remember the big things. For the two new council members, I wrote a memo to the city manager dated September one, two thousand twenty-three. It specifically asked for information regarding budgeting for maintaining the community assets we already have. Because it had already been identified that many of our assets are deteriorating and there's no money specifically set aside for it. As the new members, I direct you to it because it's important how the manager answered or didn't answer and what hasn't been done. Specific examples, the project from the class of nineteen fifty-eight, they put out those beautiful signs along the walkway and had given the city money in order to maintain those signs after they were put in. That money was used for other things and those signs are deteriorating and they're not being maintained. We had the issue of what is our budget to maintain? Diggin's Hill tennis courts to maintain the playground downtown, the swings, et cetera. Because if we are being financial stewards of these assets, there need to be specific monies set aside to budget for a regular maintenance. That includes our docks, that includes the sidewalks on the walkways, that includes our electrical boxes that are in horrible maintenance. Two years ago, I directed the manager to the fact that there were over fifty-five electrical boxes left open around the lake with open circuits, the ability of children to put their fingers in, puddles around them. If you don't have a budget to maintain and you don't have a manager directing his people to maintain them, we lose these assets. Putting in new assets doesn't help if we let our old assets go. And Marcus, again, I'll talk later tonight, you've completely failed to address that. That memo, just so you know, also identifies in the manager's response that he violated the LDFA bylaws for all fifteen years, indicating to me as a council member in response, it was only necessary to have one meeting a year, which is a flat-out lie. That is something that has to be addressed. We need to know why the city is working on putting in a DDA development director when we as a city have increased the money to our downtown or our, our community development director. Why is there a need when we already have an employee who's supposed to be taking care of those tasks? An employee who failed at the enforcement of the zoning ordinance because he's also responsible for that. That has not been addressed, that needs to be addressed in the budget. I was the one that pushed for setting aside a certain amount for enforcement in the zoning budget. And it was like pulling teeth to get Mr. Pesha to do anything on that. We ended up adding someone and I argued that that was fiscally unresponsible when we were paying people to do the job already. Why were we gonna increase taking citizens' money when the job wasn't being done in the first place? In relation to simple things, the CCTV, council's obligation is to make sure the public is informed and aware and able to get the information. I don't know why there's a pause on saying our senior citizens have to wait for action to redo it. Eleven thousand dollars is a minor, minuscule portion of our budget that can be more important to those seniors than some of the flashy projects that we try to do. We are supposed to be responsible stewards when we sit in your position. I tried to be. I left because three members didn't want to follow what their duties were by charter and I never wanted to be seen as endorsing the failure to follow charter to manage the manager. I would ask that all these items I just talked about for budgeting are critical to be put in before this council passes a budget. These are issues why the budget almost didn't pass last time because Mr. Pesha would not respond with the numbers I had requested for to make sure they were in the budget. So we were being financial stewards. That is the council's job. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close public comments. And we don't have to do anything else at this time, so we can move on to, where are we?
Communications.
Communication, Sandy.
This is being recommended to approve the race course and the closure of the east end of Sunset Lane to Selma Street from eight AM to eleven AM on May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five for the Rotary Club of Cadillac's Stride for Strive 5K.
I'd make a motion to approve the race course and the closure of the east end of Sunset Lane to Selma Street from eight AM to eleven AM on May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six for the Rotary Club of Cadillac's Stride for Strag 5K.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Allen Bass.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Mayor Shippers.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Reagan O'Neal to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term to expire on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-eight.
I would like to point out that he's been serving for twenty-eight years. Although there may be somebody who served the city longer, it'd be hard pressed to find him. So thank you, Reagan, and just wanted to make sure everybody knows that.
I'd make a motion to approve the reappointment of Reagan O'Neal to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for a three-year term to expire on May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-eight.
Support.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
It's being recommended to approve the appointment of Carla Moore to the Historic Districts Commission for a three-year term to expire on April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
Can I just say something about Carla Moore too? Here's somebody who came to council to give us some information. She's come to some work sessions and now she's volunteering to serve on a, on a board. This is the way to make things happen in the community, so thank you, Carla.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Carla Moore to the Historic Districts Commission for a three-year term to expire on April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-eight.
Support.
Councilmember Allen Bass?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries. Now, there's, there's one more, right?
Yes.
Oh, adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
PFAS report?
Oh, seriously?
We have that on as a, as a.
As a placeholder?
Counsel had asked for.
Has any, oh, how are we doing with, have people made appointments for the testing?
Yeah, I, Jeff's gonna mention that really quickly. All I wanted to mention too is that, you know, we're continuing to wait to find out if any of the outside funding requests that we've put in will be granted. There is a, a process to it that's outside of our control. But we have tried to get funding through both the state government and federal government. There are, you know, certain grants that might be out there, but we don't have any contamination within the municipal system. And, you know, because of that, as well as at least one that I'm aware of, you have to have over ten, excuse me, you have to have under ten thousand in population, which we, we are just over by about four hundred. We're not eligible for, but we are still keeping our fingers crossed that at least a couple that we put in for will, will pan out.
Jeff, could you just briefly mention some of the stats you've got?
Yep, we have sent out twenty tests so far to be, PFAS test to be tested. We did one last week, Friday, and one the previous Friday from there. We should be getting the first set of results back on the end of this week or the beginning of next week. We did have four other people that had already tested their homes individually. They provided us with that data and said they didn't want us to test because they had the data already. So they provided it to, to us and allowed us to share it with the state. And then we also had two people that called us that was in an M-Part study area that M-Part said if somebody calls you from a study area that hasn't been tested, forward that information to us because they want everybody in those areas to be tested the same way, same test. So they're gonna come back and test those people when they come back. Other than that, this week, we have six tomorrow that's gonna be tested. We have one on Thursday. I would plead, recommend, ask people out there, if you've received a letter and you're in the city of Cadillac, please call the utilities department to schedule a, a well test. If you did not receive a letter, the mail did not get to you, call us and we'll identify if you're in this, in the city and if you get a PFAS test. If you're on the old private well and you're in the city of Cadillac, we will be providing, and not in a study area, we will be doing the PFAS test for you. So you just have to call us. Other than that, we were asked by the township to get some data together on what possible cost to go to Mary Street was. We did receive a rough estimate from our engineers. We asked the engineers, actually pretty extensive, how many foot of pipe, how many taps they'd have to do, how many wells to abandon. And we have forwarded that information onto the township. So we'll, we'll see where that goes with the township.
Can you tell, tell me what that rough estimate was?
Marcus, can I? I mean.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Two hundred and fifty thousand for approximately for Seneca and then about five hundred and fifty thousand for Mary Street. So about seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and eighty. And, you know, don't quote beyond the exact numbers, but you're pretty close there. Mary Street would be a hundred percent the township's responsibility because it's all in the township. The Seneca, you know, we can talk, you know, the council can talk with their council and see because it is on the border, we could use half of it, they could use half of it. Maybe there's something we want to do with that at that point. But, you know, that's the council's decision. So, but they, they should have that number now and they can decide what they want to do with it.
Thank you. Now, right? Yes, adoption of ordinances and resolutions. Do you wanna, should we just?
Sure, I, I.
Why don't you introduce it?
Uh, so thank you. We have with us a very patient woman who created Jam and Bread tonight that is gonna talk just, just for a quick minute about what Jam and Bread is and an upcoming event where the necessity of a charitable gaming license is needed.
Hello. Hi, everybody, and thank you so much for all the service that you do for our community. It's greatly appreciated. So I am the president and founder of Jam and Bread and we offer free music lessons in the community. And our main goal is to inspire kids to get into art. And we also, we help sponsor music lessons. So our main goal is, we did two bingo events last year that were successful enough that we were able to buy instruments for the kids. And also, we put fifteen hundred dollars back into the community. The kids went Christmas shopping for area shelters. So because it was so successful, we would like to do it again. And we kind of need your help. We need this local governing body resolution saying that we are a five oh one C three here in Cadillac. One hundred percent of the proceeds are going into our music programs. And we're gonna be working with the Philharmonic and hopefully be able to bring more string teachers and stuff into town because we have a wonderful string program here and this is all going to support it. So it's gonna go right back into the kids.
Now, forgive me for not knowing, but where did you hold it last year and where are you gonna hold it?
So actually, this would be a one-year license. So this is actually going to be coming into our downtown area. We're gonna be going it to Mima Scow. So it's gonna be burritos and bingo.
So where'd you do it last year?
Last year we did it at the greenhouse, so, yeah. Both were great places. It's just with the gaming license, with the one year, we have to lock into a place for a year and one of the establishments is currently for sale. So throws a wrench in it. But Mima Scow will be great and it's a wonderful place downtown.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to adopt local governing body resolution for charitable gaming licenses for Jam and Bread.
I'll support. Councilmember Hopkins?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Shippers?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you all so much.
I'm sorry, we should have moved this up.
It's all good, I just appreciate everything that everybody does.
Wait three hours.
Yeah, well, you know, hey, you know, it's like. Thank you again.
And that brings us to public comments.
Good evening, Stephen King, again, six oh four Holly Road. For the two new council members and for others, one, I thank the Cadillac News for printing the article on the evaluations and printing a portion of my evaluation. I've been asked to make sure that I let the two new council members know of my final summary and to ask them to personally read not only my twelve-page evaluation, so you can get up to speed, but also that September one, two thousand twenty-three memo that was requesting specific information of our manager. I'm gonna read this as I wrote it when I was on council. "I no longer believe our manager has the ability to succeed. I believe that he has not met goals during this evaluation period. I believe he has irreparably damaged his reputation and integrity during this period. I believe council has a duty by charter to specifically address the transactions and the dishonesty." And that refers back to not only his false request for increases in October of two thousand twenty-four, but when he tried to get a car through Mayor Shippers and, I'm sorry, Mayor Shippers now, Mayor Philkins there with an unlimited personal credit card. I believe, I'm sorry, in my opinion, he has demonstrated to me as a council member, to the public and to the LDFA board, that he has been dishonest. We are beyond a quote "learning" unquote "experience" as Mayor Philkins had suggested this fall. I continue to have a lack of confidence in our manager, who in my opinion has failed in his duties and has created the possibility of more than appearance of impropriety in his self-serving actions and his failures and/or omissions to be transparent with information as he provided to the public, council and the LDFA board. This also includes the fact that we were not informed of a two thousand eighteen ordinance to hook private parties up to wells to protect their health. I was unaware of that until two thousand twenty-four. That in and of itself should be a termination. The manager's own actions have caused great division in our community and on council. I see what happened with the shuffling of the council, what happened with the debacle with the one twenty-eight Pine Street House, not to be their fault. That was the fault to the manager who failed to manage the community develop director, development director, who created unrealistic and untrue expectations in people who are trying to invest in our community. And the manager did nothing about that. And he chose to ignore what had happened. And it cost us money in litigation. And it cost us a lack of trust in the community towards the council and towards the manager.
Thank you, Mr. King, that's three minutes.
I'll be back.
I know. Thank you.
Brad Marine Cadillac. The public deserves to know the truth. Mayor Shippers, your evaluation of Marcus was more of a PR emotional statement than it was a fact. Because there's a lot of things. it was a fact because there's a lot of things that are missing. The fact, as Mr. King brought up, that Mr. Pesha openly admitted that he hasn't been following, didn't even have a copy of the bylaws for fifteen years. There's no mention of that. There's no mention of the fact that Mr. Pesha and Mr. Deetland knew about PFAS for years and didn't say anything to the board. There's no mention of that. And then Councilmember Ingalls, you say no part of the city manager's review took place at the April seventh meeting, but that's not true because Mayor Shippers read the summary evaluation into record on camera for the public. If that's not part of the process, what is it? Another PR stunt? Are you, are you looking to really prop up Mr. Pesha? I mean, he doesn't need a PR firm, he's got the mayor. You blatantly disregard him not following the law. And, and we've brought the documents, the documents are there. If you're interested in seeing them, we'll bring them again. But evidently, you're not interested in hearing them, you're not interested in seeing them, you just wanna turn a blind eye to it. You would not release, and you, you lied to the public again, Mayor, saying there's a mix-up because Mr. King filled out one form, but you all filled out another. And it's just a mix-up. It seems like every time there's a mistake, when you try to hide the truth, it's because of a mix-up. So when you talk about spreading shade, you know, you say that the review took into consideration what the public had to say? And then you spin it, Mayor, you say, well, they're trying to put shade upon him. What's the other one? The public input, there's half-truths. They're, they're trying to make him look bad. So if that's the way you're gonna take public feedback, you're gonna turn it and spin it into your own little emotional PR stunt, you don't, you shouldn't be in that spot. You don't have the ability to be objective. You're emotionally involved in this and you can't separate it. Now, you can sit up there and smirk, but all anybody has to do is read your evaluation. It's very simple. Your, your description of public input, input as being shade, trying to put shade upon my, my precious Mr. Pesha, seriously? Why don't you listen? How many people have been up here and expressing frustration and you blow it off? You are not the right person for this job.
Thank you.
Matt King again. I'm gonna touch back to when Mayor Philkins stepped down. We were looking to get the city online and I think that one of the things that should've happened is Mayor Shippers, if she was truly a representative of the city people, would not have put her name forward because all that did was kick the can down the road to think that we had to replace her and then Councilman King. And I don't necessarily agree with Mr. Marine in the sense that it was done out of emotion, but I do agree, I think it was done out of the act of protecting Mr. Pesha. And I don't know to what end that is because you have heard from the community, all of you have, that things are not done. Just walk to the park. Again, it's a little thing, but there are Christmas lights hanging up in April, that's not done. And it all falls back to the same thing and I don't know why. I don't think anyone knows why you're dying on this hill. It doesn't make sense. I applaud the people of Pine Street for wanting to do business here. I'd be scared watching things get misrun, being misled by a community director. That's a scary thing to come do business in and it falls on one person's plate and you guys are carrying that load when you shouldn't. Please, again, I said it before, I'll say it again, put the community first, put us first, please. That's all we're asking. Thank you.
Andy Van Oost again. Well, I'm disappointed, you know, I mean, I, I thought that, you know, if you sue somebody, that should be an effective way to stop the bad behavior that we talked about and we talked about trying to keep consistency. So I feel bad for these guys because they get sued and then next thing you know, they're not sued. And then you go, what kind of, what are we doing? And what bothers me more than any of that is now that you go, oh, we will reverse that, we'll go ahead, bad behavior now is something that we reward and we'll do some spot zoning to benefit individuals. And so they have other properties around town that I'm just scared that the genie's been let out of the bottle now. So now, I, I was, and my paperwork I didn't get to before because I ran out of town, was that, you know, if it's done today, then it's done, but it's not done. So I feel bad that some of the new people here couldn't follow the legacy that is important to have continuity of how the operations occur. And I feel really bad that TI, that you had flip-flopped on your, your talks and what you had printed and stuff like that. I guess I don't really understand what happened if you go, if it's because these people, we can't, we can't punish bad people because they're bad people if they're bad people. But then you go, well, then why'd you sue them? They were bad people then or are they bad people now or they weren't, but now they are, or how's that work? Seems arbitrary and, yeah, anyways, I'm scared, I'm not sleeping good at night again because now I'm gonna go, when are you guys going to allow the next adjacent property to get zoned into a short-term rental because it's already contiguous? And you're scaring people, so, okay.
Thank you.
Pat Ponzac, Cadillac. What I see happening is rather than enforce zoning as it stands and has been enforced, maybe it's due to be reevaluated, but it hasn't been yet. So either you're gonna enforce the zoning or you're not gonna enforce the zoning, or you're gonna enforce the zoning the way you imagine it's gonna be when you get done with your rezoning efforts. But you're not doing the zoning, you're not enforcing the zoning that exists at the moment. Enforcement has been very lacking and if something isn't zoned the way you like it, rather than enforce the zoning, you just say, we'll change the zoning, we'll change the zoning here, we'll change the zoning there. Whenever it's inconvenient to enforce zoning, we can just change the zoning. Right? Right?
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Carla Moore. And I live in Cadillac. And I just wanted to say thank you all for your yes votes on my appointment and thank you for your kind comments.
Seeing no one else. Anyone have anything for good of the order?
Just wanted to mention a couple of things. There were some comments earlier this evening specifically regarding maintenance and maintenance-related items and one of our staff members happened to be watching the meeting live at home and messaged me, that works in Public Works and Operations, and reminded me that the holiday lighting that was specifically up, you know, over, over Christmas time, you know, it doesn't come down till after we have a thaw and the snow is gone because it's the same one crew of Public Works employees that also do the salting and, and plowing and sanding and whatnot. And so what has to happen first is the weather has to cooperate. What hap, what has to happen second is availability of the crew to actually then move away from, frankly, doing emergency pothole-type filling and then moving off into removing the holiday lighting. The utility-type boxes all along the walkway, a lot of those boxes are irrigation. Some of them don't have locks on them right now because Ingalls will continue to break them open thinking that there is power. Those that are power boxes should be locked if the power's on. If they're, if they're, if they're not locked or if a lock is gone, then, you know, hopefully the, the power is off and it's my understanding that the power is off unless we're using the box for something. The level of repair, they're, they are old, but it's, it's something that is, is still functional. Street sweeping is something that I don't believe came up, but it is something that we just started last week and will continue to do. Pickleball nets were left up intentionally, they're listed as all-weather type nets and we actually did have several people playing at different times prior to deep snow coming in. Regarding the, the doggy bags for folks to use, also interesting, either there's been a lot more dogs out recently or we have somebody that are taking the bags. We went through over a hundred of them within three or four days. So not sure if it's due to active use or if it's due to somebody just taking a whole box of them, but obviously we'll be replacing those as time goes by.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, having done that job before in my thirteen years, the mains for those power boxes are in the number one bathroom, there's a building over by the dock and there's another one across from the junior high or the high school. And when those boxes don't have a use for them, the mains are turned off. So there's no juice there anyway. If you have an event where they're needed, they're turned on. I've done it a hundred times over thirteen years. It's ridiculous. I'm done.
I would, I, I'd also, anybody else have something? So I would like to congratulate John Wallace at the end of this month. He is retiring and I'd like to thank you for your service to the community and your, your expertise over the years. Thank you very much for your service and congratulations on your retirement.
Biggest smile I've seen of the guy.
Yes, I'll be celebrating.
Thank you, John.
Enter December. Anything else? Okay, with that, we are adjourned.